Reno City Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Taylor, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Michelle, can we get roll call?
Just one moment. J.D. Draculich.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Arthur Munoz.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva is absent. Alex Velto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We'll now move on to open up public comments. This item is for public comment on any action item or for any item of general public comments. Do we have any request to speak forums?
We did not receive any requests. Oh, wait, let me read my thing first and then we'll start that part, okay? It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. So with that, we did receive correspondence that was general in nature and not specific to any items on this agenda. We did not receive any voicemails and I do not believe we received any request to speak forums. And I'm looking on the Zoom meeting to see if anybody has their hand raised. Hang on just a second. And it doesn't appear anybody is raising their hand to speak during public comments, so.
Would anyone in the public like to speak on a general item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move on to public hearings. Item 4.1 has been polled, so we'll move to item 4.2, which is, and we'll open up the public hearing for LDC 22-00085, Mountain View Estates, Unit 5 zoning map amendment. Grace, do we have a presentation?
Yes, and the applicant is here for questions if necessary. Just wait one moment. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Grace Whitede, Associate Planner for the Record, here to discuss the Mountain View Estates, Unit 5 zoning map amendment. So the subject site is located in North Reno, south of Par Boulevard, in between North Virginia Street and US 395, just south of the railroad. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from single-family 11 units per acre to multifamily 14 units per acre. To the south of the site is all residential zoning, mostly attached and detached single-family. To the north of the site is industrial and more intense uses. If this zone change were to be approved, this site would serve as a transition from the lower intensity residential to the south and east of the property, to the higher intensity industrial and railroad to the north and west. So the master plan for this site is mixed neighborhood, which supports single-family and small multifamily projects. This change from SF 11 to MF 14 would support a higher density single-family or a small multifamily development. So here is the comparison of development standards allowed in single-family 11 units per acre and multifamily 14 units per acre. Density is probably the biggest change between the two zoning districts. SF 11 allows for 11 units per acre and MF 14 allows for 14 units per acre. This would yield a total of 466 units. Oops, sorry, skipped ahead. And that's about 100 unit difference between SF 11 and MF 14. Any future land division of four or more lots, multifamily development greater than 20 units, will trigger a discretionary review process through which additional site-specific standards may be applied. Here are the findings for a zoning map amendment. This zoning map amendment does not conflict with state law and it still conforms to our master plan. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment. The motion is on your screen and I am available for questions.
Great, thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chairman Velto, Commissioners. John Kropotic, Grace said I'm here for questions. So, if I could have the PowerPoint, there's actually one slide I wanted to share with the commission. I'm representing MVE 5, Rob Fitzgerald. He's the home builder that's done all of the prior phases of that whole top of the hill. So I just wanted to point out on this map, actually two maps, CMVE 1, 2, 3, and 4, that's all been done by this applicant, Northern Nevada Homes, Rob Fitzgerald. He's in his final phase of that area. He's talking about a product change. That's what's driving this zone change. The flexibility to do two or three or four unit attached multifamily is what he has in mind. I, you know, agree entirely with staff on the mixed neighborhood policy basis for this change. That's germane to the zone change. Also, staff makes the case about the land use compatibility, so I'm not going to be redundant here. If I could go to the slide on circulation, Michelle? Oh, I guess I'm controlling this, right? Important to the community up there for the last 10 years we've been doing things, and I just wanted to share this with the commission. Many of you know about this, but the key is that we have good access to Ferrari McLeod and up to Par Boulevard to the north. This network that's been approved, you see we have it tagged as the newly approved road alignment. That was done with staff administratively to have a nice, clean connection to that existing MVE 4. And then south, we have the network programmed in that Collector Street that wraps around to the south and then all the way to Comstock Road. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald's here as well. If he wanted to get into product stuff, I know that's not typically part of zone change discussion, but certainly it would be part of it.
Sure, thank you. Okay, we'll come back to the commission for disclosures. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz, I spoke with the applicant's representative and I'm familiar with the area.
Commissioner Draculich, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto spoke with the applicant's representative and familiar with the site. We'll now move on to public comment. Do we have any request to speak forums?
Did not receive request to speak forums. No emails were or voicemails were received on this item.
Great, thank you. Anybody in the public like to speak on public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and come back to the commission for questions or discussion? Or a motion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I have a comment and then a discussion item. I just want to comment on the findings and the one that I'm looking at, and I'll be looking at this a couple of times tonight, is our master plan conformance finding. And I do want to point out, I very much agree with the way this was presented. The policy is talking about specifically the type of housing options and the diversity of those housing options and how this is sort of giving another option in that area for a different kind of product as the applicant suggested. So I want to, you know, I do want to point out specifically that I can definitely make that finding as a result of how that's been presented this evening. So with that, if there is no additional discussion, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I may real quick. Actually, I am a little bit curious on what the product is. If you could just give us a real quick rundown since we're already moving to.
Rob Fitzgerald. Yeah, the point in the zone change was to be able to get some diversity in product type. And even though it's a jump in density in terms numerically, it's going to allow us to do more one and two-bedroom type product. We're thinking of doing them in small three and fourplex type buildings that'll visually be very compatible with what's going on up there right now and that we've been building. And just give us some diversity in product that I think really is needed up there. And, you know, I'd like to point out that, you know, this is adjacent to an employment center, which is the TMCC. And we look to that, the sheriff's office, workforce housing in general. A lot of it is missing. And this location really gives us the ability to serve the North Valleys as well. And that's really kind of a primary target. There's so much development commercially up there, the housing could be used.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Johnson, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the case of LDC 22-00085, Mountain View Estates, Unit 5 zoning map amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
No motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Gower, a second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thanks so much, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item 4.3, which is case number LDC 22-00083, Keystone Commons, Pad F drive-through, drive-through.
Stacy, is this your project? Ready?
Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
My apologies, I didn't know who was going first. Keyboard or the remote?
We'll get it up in just a second. Okay, there you go.
Is it gonna be this, Michelle? Or the keyboard? Okay. There we go. Got it? All right, good evening. Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers for the record, representing the applicant, on behalf of the applicant, S3 Keystone Retail. Just a little bit of background on the location of this project. I'm sure several of you are familiar with this area. The project site is located on the northwest corner of West Fifth and Keystone. It used to be where the old Q and cushion used to be. If you're familiar with that area, there's an existing Wendy's that still sits on this general corner that's not part of this project. So that aerial that you see there represents the site as it's developed most recently. That picture was taken in June, I believe, so you can see what exists on the site now. The project site is highlighted in blue on the bottom portion of the aerial image. The parcel was previously zoned DRCC Keystone, which, under that zoning, permitted drive-throughs as an accessory to restaurants. So most of the fast food restaurants on this site were not reviewed at Planning Commission under that previous zoning. The new zoning, mixed-use downtown northwest quadrant, allows restaurants but requires a CUP for the drive-through, which is why we are here tonight. So looking at the original layout of this project, again, this was a commercial center focused on providing a mix of commercial uses, retail, restaurant, office, and some residential on the eastern side. The original design contemplated 48,000 square feet of commercial uses with approximately 11,000 square feet consisting of fast food with the drive-throughs, which you can see on the site plan identified throughout. Pad F, which is the main focus of our discussion tonight, was previously planned with a 14,000 square foot building. It had been intended to be a two-story building with ground floor retail and then second-story restaurant, something like a nicer restaurant with an outdoor patio. So since that original plan was contemplated, some things have changed. There's been less demand for retail in the area, maybe as a result of COVID. There's been an increased demand for fast casual restaurants. And so the developer has changed their approach and they are coming forward now with a much smaller project on Pad F that will consist of that fast casual restaurant catering more to a drive-through or short-term type pickup for restaurant uses. So Pad F is now approximately 4,000 square feet. It brings the overall center to approximately 45,000 square feet as opposed to 48, which also by default has a significant reduction to the overall trip generation, which has been something that was discussed early on and when the project was originally brought forward. So looking specifically at the project tonight, again, the request for a drive-through associated with the building Pad F. The drive-through lanes and the window have been located on the north side of the building where they're screened from the public view. You can see that with the window on the north, we're able to provide on the south side of the building pedestrian access and amenities in the form of seating areas, which is consistent with the Starbucks that exists there directly to the west. The drive-through lanes, there are two of them that converge into one. They are designed to accommodate six vehicles per lane plus two when they converge together. It's approximately 330 feet of stacking, which ensures that the stacking of those vehicles stays within the project site and does not spill out onto the public streets. Excuse me. The, again, the drive-through on the north side of the building is consistent with the mixed-use standards for building orientation and street frontage with that pedestrian amenity and access on the south side at Fifth Street. The public seating areas will be improved with decorative hardscape, consistent with the existing public areas in the general overall center. The project also provides pedestrian access in and around the site via existing sidewalks with direct access from Fifth Street. And I could go back and show you that aerial from the very first slide where you would see all of the existing sidewalks are in place currently, including an ADA ramp that comes up from Fifth Street to the access in between the Starbucks and Pad F. Also, all of any new sidewalks or paths that are within this parking area that would cross through the drive-aisles or the drive-through lanes are planned to be changing color or material so that they're very obvious that they are crosswalks, so that between the pedestrians and the vehicles, it's very clear that you are crossing in front of one or the other. That concludes my presentation. We've read the staff report. We agree with all the conditions. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Hello and good evening, members of the commission, chairman. For the record, my name is Leah Brock, Assistant Planner with Development Services in the City of Reno. This evening, I am presenting the application for the drive-through food service facility on Pad F for the development known as the Keystone Commons. I'll try not to reiterate everything that Stacy just went over and just hit some of the highlights here. So the applicant has requested a conditional use permit to allow for a drive-through facility as an accessory use to the primary use as a restaurant. The site is located on the southeast corner of a 1.6 acre parcel on the edge of the mixed-use downtown northwest quadrant district. Key issues related to this request include general site design and traffic access and circulation. The subject parcel is located in that mixed-use downtown northwest quadrant. Uses surrounding the site include four existing drive-through facilities. There is a Wendy's on the parcel to the east, which is not located on the subject parcel, but within the subject parcel, there is an In-N-Out Burger and a Chipotle and a Starbucks. So there are three existing drive-throughs on that parcel. Across Fifth Street to the south is an automotive parts store and a car wash. And other businesses within Keystone Commons Plaza to the north are restaurants and services. As conditioned, the proposed drive-through facility does appear to be consistent and compatible with the surrounding development. The subject site is located on the western edge of the master planned land use designation of downtown mixed use. The downtown mixed use is intended to include a diverse mix of employment, including restaurants and services to support the workforce. The proposed drive-through food service facility does conform to the characteristics of the designation as outlined in the master plan. And as proposed and with the recommended conditions, the project is in conformance with the master planned land use designation and the applicable master plan goals and policies such as community development, urban revitalization, neighborhood services, walkable centers, and a mix of uses. The overall site design is comprised of a 3,950 square foot restaurant. As Stacy discussed, there are stacking lanes, two lanes that merge into one. Reno municipal code does require 140 feet of stacking lanes. In this case, the application exceeds that by more than double, offering 330 feet of stacking lanes. Also, per RMC, 17 trees would be required to be planted on-site. The application has proposed 22 trees and we have added that as condition number five. Regarding traffic access and circulation, as Stacy said, there was a 2019 master traffic study before the project was developed. For the proposed project, vehicles will enter the drive-through lane from either the existing paved drive aisle that runs through the approximate center of the parcel, or they can come off of Fifth Street up that private drive between the Wendy's and the Pad F. Exit would be the same thing. The only thing I want to point out is if they do go through the center of the parcel, out the drive onto Keystone Avenue, that is a right only, whereas if they come off onto Fifth Street, they can turn either direction. Prior to the development on the site, again, that master traffic study was prepared in 2019. Staff has determined that the proposed project is smaller in scope than the uses that were assumed in February of 2019 and will slightly reduce the traffic volumes that were previously identified in that study. Per the design standards outlined in Reno Municipal Code and the Reno Master Plan, the building has been oriented toward Fifth Street with pedestrian amenities fronting Fifth Street, including a patio with tables and chairs. ADA accessible pedestrian routes to the building will be provided from the existing sidewalk off of Fifth Street. ADA accessible pedestrian crossings are proposed in two locations across the drive-through, which you can see circled in red on the screen above. To enhance that pedestrian safety and mitigate impacts of drive-through operations, all pedestrian crossings on-site shall utilize the change in surface material and include signage identifying their location to the vehicular traffic. That has been conditioned as number six. The project was reviewed by various city divisions and partner agencies. Hearing notices were sent out to surrounding property owners and no comments have been received. With the recommended conditions of approval, the existing site does appear to meet or exceed code standards and it addresses the applicable findings. Therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the staff report. That does conclude my presentation. The recommended motion is on the screen and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll now come back to the commission for disclosures, start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I am familiar with the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, I'm familiar with the site and corresponded with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site.
Commissioner Munoz, familiar with the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures. We'll now open up public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forums?
Did not receive request to speak forums. No correspondence or voicemails were received. I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom requesting to speak on this item either.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Back to the commission for questions or comments. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stacy, I have a quick question for you, and I would probably have never asked this question if we didn't have the first item hearing pulled. My question is about stacking. Do you have enough stacking and capacity? Should this place be a popular chicken place? That might generate a lot more traffic from just, you know, from an item that was previously pulled. They're asking for, they were gonna ask for 50, 49 stacking capacity, so.
Michelle, would you mind pulling up my presentation one more time just so I can have a picture while we're talking? Stacy Huggins, for the record. Commissioner Taylor, so we, on this particular project, are not anticipating a chicken restaurant. Actually, this Pad F user is intended to be a Panera. And so we believe, based on their other businesses, that 330 feet or six cars per lane plus two at the window is adequate for their business model.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Velto? Thank you. Yeah, just piggybacking that, I visit this shopping center at least once or twice a week. They've done a very good job on handling all the traffic with all the very popular establishments there, and I feel confident from what they've already have set up in place to handle that and knowing that it's not going to be something as extremely popular, that they'll be fine there. But just knowing from experience, they've done a really good job up there.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Leah, I got a couple of clarification questions, but please. Just, I appreciate the presentation from Stacy pointing out the fact that, you know, the others, there was no CUP required for the other ones. So I'm hoping this is a typo. If not, I've got one for the update on the code. But your statement in the note here talks about that in the northwest quadrant zoning district, the CUP is required and that they're only permitted, and it says east of 580?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, because absolutely none of the northwest quadrant exists east of 580.
Right, so if it's not east of 580, then it can only be permitted if it's within a quarter mile of an offer.
Okay, I guess I'm just, the northwest quadrant is not east of 580 in any.
Right, exactly. So we're saying it's not east of 580, so, but it is within.
That's not necessarily tied to the northwest quadrant, that's it, okay.
That is correct.
That was the clarification. And then I guess the follow-up to what I pointed out in the first one, I was looking at the master plan findings and I actually am a little bit, maybe in a little disagreement with the way that these have been presented, because as was talked about, this was originally meant to be a larger sort of mixed-use facility. And now what's being proposed is a drive-through facility that is similar to the other drive-through facilities that we're speaking of there. So I would not be saying that in some of our master plan findings that we've got more neighborhood services or a mix of uses on the site based on what we're having here. In fact, I would think that this is actually a downgrade to that. So I guess maybe my question to you is how did, how is it that staff was putting those out there as a master plan conformance when what's being proposed is very similar and a auto-centric way to what's already there?
When I look at those master plan policies, I'm not looking specifically at one site, but I'm looking at but I'm looking at the uses in that general area. And does it conform to bringing a mix of uses that is needed? And when you look at the things that are around that, it does actually hit those master plan policies. Let me see if I have it here. Basically conforming to those neighborhood centers where you do have that mix of uses. And so again, I'm not looking specifically just at that parcel, but I'm looking at the entire area there and does this contribute to the mix of uses? And as we all know, those drive throughs are, have become extremely popular, especially in the last couple of years with COVID. And it is providing another, another amenity to the mix of uses that already exist in that area.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Whether or not I agree with that approach, but I appreciate you explaining that to me. And then I guess the last question I have, Mr. Chair, is you pointed out and I appreciate you looking at condition number six with respect to the pedestrian crossings. To me, this is, this is sort of opposite what we would want to see from a drive through situation. That the parking and pedestrian access to the facility would not cross the drive through. And I think that's the way that the others are in this complex. So in staff's way of looking at this, how are we, I mean, I understand the condition that's here, but are we doing enough or creating a situation that allows for the finding, talking about pedestrian safety, when by our very nature, anybody walking into the building has to cross the street?
Well, I think when we're looking at this, we're trying to enhance that safety, which is why we stuck condition six in there. But we also have to comply with the other design standards of Reno Municipal Code with building orientation and having those pedestrian amenities up front. So if the entire site were to be redesigned with that drive through potentially on the other side, then it wouldn't meet the other design requirements for pedestrian amenities and building orientation. So I think in this particular case, we've gone above and beyond to assure safety in those areas and added that condition number six to assure that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions of Leah or the applicant? Okay, discussion? Commissioner Dracula?
Mr. Care? Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion. In the matter of case number LDC 22-00083 Keystone Commons Pad F Drive Through, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend that Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Taylor, all second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, before you take that, I just want to have a little discussion about the motion, just as a a follow up on my questions, because I do, I do struggle with what we're looking at here. Because I appreciate that we're meeting code by not routing the drive through on the front and we're creating a softer front to the project. And from an overall planning standpoint, I 100% support that approach. But to that end, what we're being asked to do is to take a site that wasn't originally intended to have a drive through and put one in there. And by doing so and by keeping in conformance with the rest of our code, we are creating in my mind a potential conflict directly to our finding about a safe environment for pedestrians. And I appreciate that we have everything in there for the crosswalk and the different materials. I just, I struggle with this because that's not the way that anybody who goes, that's not going through the drive through. The tendency is you walk from the parking lot directly into the building and the drive through is not something that pedestrians ever cross. And we are forcing that in this particular design. So to me, this is a situation where we're being asked to compare what our code requires us to do in the building orientation and apply that in the situation where we're potentially impacting another one of our findings. So that was why I brought it up. I appreciate the discussion. Obviously, we can all, you know, make up our minds one way or the other on that. But I just wanted to point out that to me, we are actually putting something out here that could potentially be a problem in the long run as a direct result of our code requirements for development on the site. So I just wanted that to be the follow up to the questions that I asked today. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the point of discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
And again, because I'm unable to make finding number four for providing the safe environment.
The motion carries five to one. Good luck with your project. We'll now move to item 4.4. This is case number LDC 22-00084 Viewpoint Apartments. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Dave Snellgrove, Planning and Right of Way Manager with CFA. With me in the audience tonight, I have Christina Siegfried and also Bob Skiff, who are with the applicant's team Monobello 2LP. I have Jeremy Packer with Cathexus Architecture here, who did the architectural designs. You can see the perspectives of. And I also have Kathleen Knight, who's our Engineering Service Manager at CFA. And Lauren Chilson may show up, just in case you have any traffic questions. Property location is south of I-80 and to the west of South McCarran Boulevard. There, the Monobello apartments sit up there just by the Home Depot, Home Depot parking lot area. They built out, this was previously graded site. This was supposed to be the second phase of what was originally called Oasis, the Bluffs. It was approved back in 1995. They did grading on the site, but they never got around to actually doing construction. There's utilities in the ground, there's rockery walls, there's all sorts of stuff, but never got around to constructing. We have common ownership in association with the Monobello product and this site. So this is really the continuation of something that was envisioned and approved a long time ago. We really have about 19 additional units over what had been previously approved 20 plus years ago. What we're asking for, we have a conditional use permit to develop 432 unit multifamily residential. We also have grading that will exceed the 10-foot thresholds, which are identified in code. And we have a major deviation. I'll go through that major deviation because it's not on the whole site. It's just one particular part. It's kind of a little anomaly with some of the zoning that's north of us. So I'll point out where that is as we go through. On the left hand side of the screen is the existing Reno Master Plan. Reason that you have the green and open space area there, there are steep slopes that go down the hill. And what had been graded up on top previously is pretty much what we're sticking to now. Similar pad area and what's been worked with that, that is identified to be in a multifamily type use. The zoning on the site, the whole property is designated MF14. The zoning on the property on the 41.16 acres would calculate out to a maximum number of units of 576 units. We are coming in under that at 432 units is what we're proposing. This is a copy and it was kind of hard to find in our files and in the city's files, some really good images of what the whole thing looked like. So we piecemealed some, some things together that we were able to pull out of the city's files. The green line there is the separation where Phase One and Phase Two were in that previous project. That was case number 79-95, which was called Oasis, the Bluffs previously. That was approved for 864 total units. So we are working with the side that Phase Two was graded but not completed. And the Phase One is the existing Monobello Apartments and that is completed and operating. You can see the area of grading and I mentioned the green areas on the master plan. You can see where the steeper slopes are. We're not going to be going into those steeper areas. We're going up toward the edge of them and I would believe working with the site better in terms of some, some view potential from the site, which really hadn't been optimized in the last product type. The plan previously was to stay with those eight pack buildings with four per floor, two story. We're working with what's a two-three split and I'll get into the architecture a little bit later, but it'll be three stories from one side and two stories from the other. Working with some of the contour and topography that we do have on the site. While this is a pad area, flatter area that was previously graded, it does have some, some fall to it. So we are trying to work with that effectively and positively with the architectural styling and hillside adaptive architecture. This is the general site plan and what you can see from the shape of this area, it's a little bit askew to what you see on the next bit is the shape of that really follows that previously graded pad area. And you can see on here the faint contour lines of the steeper slope that make up that whole 41.16 acre parcel. This is what the site currently looks like. This is up on the graded portion. In some of these photos, like on the upper left hand one, you can see that there's existing rockery walls, probably in the four to five foot range. There's a lot of them that were previously set and utilities were put on the site and kind of some of the roadway areas were graded in. And over time, the sagebrushes started to come back, but you can still see there was a lot of work done on the site previously. This is from the freeway. And what I want to point out with this, up on top, I have a, I have some topography relative to the freeway and I have a couple arrows. So on the left hand side, it's view of that left hand arrow, kind of looking towards the site. You can see the Harris billboards and then in the, in the background there up on top of the bluff, you can see the Monobello Apartments. That's the only area that we really have a view in towards the site. The arrow up on the top of my, my topography picture and that purple dash line, that purple dash line identifies a berm that was created, really runs all the way along the existing Monobello Apartments and runs about two thirds of the way down this site. Creates probably the best sound and light attenuation buffer that you can have. We have a little bit over on the far western side of the site for cars coming in, but they're not really aimed or directed right at the site. And we do have a buffer of the Harris property, which is an oddly shaped thin strip of property that, that has those Harris billboards on it that I'm sure you're probably all familiar with. The slope analysis map of the site, we are at 83.8% in our development area of 15% or less. You can see all the, the red parts on there largely where the grading in the walls, walls were. So we have some anomaly areas that, that show steeper than, than what the general site is, but those two show up at, at over 15% and actually going more towards the 30% because they're a wall. This is our cut and fill map. One of our requests is for a, to be allowed to go over the threshold of 10 feet for the, for the grading on the fills. So on this 41-point acre site, we have 1.35 acres that is exceeding that 10 feet. Those are in the purple areas that you see on this. That's working with some of this stepped architecture. There are some areas, we had to grade this in for the roads and get those to match it and then we'll have to step up. So you see on some of the high sides of the buildings, that's where we have a lot of the, the 10-foot of fill or grater. And in the middle of the site, we've got a stepped architectural relative to the clubhouse area that I'll go over in a little greater detail in a minute. So amenities on the site, the, the, there's asterisks on here and I just blew up one of the notes that they had on landscape plan. So we've got these red asterisk areas, which identify to be amenity areas, what LA Studio put on benches, dog parks, exercise stations, outdoor games, picnic tables, walking, running paths, play areas. There could be other components that we do put in there. But those are some of the things that, that could be along this edge. There is a trail system or a trail network that'll continue on from the Monobello Apartment Project off to the, it's on the edge of the slope and it's off to the east of us that'll continue along the perimeter and have some tremendous views and probably parkour facility or facilities or things like that. The purple circle, that's where the clubhouse is. That's where there will be a pool. There's a lot of different amenities that will be in that facility that's central to this site. I will point out that Monobello has their own clubhouse facility. So out of this, even though it was designed initially as one product type and one project, there will be two separate amenity areas. And then we will end up with two separate product types because these have been upgraded and updated for what today's market really is. This is the pedestrian path and sidewalk connectivity. And these will connect in with the Monobello sidewalks to the east of us. Along the perimeter and the edge, you can see the, sorry, I probably should color that a different color so that you can see that edge trail. That'll connect in with the edge trail that's on the Monobello portion of the site. This is our fencing plan. The only area that we would have a proposed six-foot masonry wall would be on that north property line. Along that north property line, that's where you've got the freeway. But you can see that we're, we're actually separated from that arc of the freeway and that's the Harris property. So we do have a little distance to the freeway and the berming runs along most of that. The green, which will be our interface with the existing Monobello apartment site, we will either have some open fencing treatment or no fencing at all. That hasn't been determined yet. And then along the perimeter and the area that you can see by the trail and where the slope drops off, largely for safety, don't want people going down the hill, actually going towards chalk bluff. That's a homeland security issue. So we really don't want people going down there too far. But that would be an open fencing treatment. It wouldn't be a solid fence up along the ridge line there. It'll be pretty much invisible or not highly, highly visible from down below. So we've, we've talked to staff about this and there's a possibility we'll end up phasing it. And we feel that the phasing scenario that we have here would work out really, really well because each one creates a loop with the existing Monobello driveways. So Phase One would provide a fire and emergency access loop. Going back out Phase Two, you get another fire and emergency access loop. And Phase Three, you get the completion of the project, which, which loops and give you the two ways of access. So we feel that that'll work out. We may end up going all in one phase, but we'd like the opportunity to be able to develop this in phases if the market dictates. The minimum lot size or minimum unit size, I should say, 820 square feet. The maximum is 1,350 square feet. Overall, our average unit size is 1,090 square feet, which kind of puts us into that small to medium range that oftentimes can get a density bonus per the code. I'll remind you, we have 576 allowed units on this. We're asking for 423. We don't need a density bonus on this, but we're meeting some of what is kind of encouraged within the code in terms of the unit size, which will hopefully measure out to some of the price, price points and provide some of the much needed housing that we need in the area. Our parking, we're required to have 487. Each unit will have a one-car garage on this site, so we have 432 in garages. Our total parking provided is 725, which puts us at 1.68 parking spaces per unit. And when the typical is usually one per unit, we have additional because we have a, we have the clubhouse parking that we added on to that. So we're 1.13 that we're saying is required and we're 1.68 unprovided. The architectural styling and these two middle, middle elevations, where you see the three story on one side and the two, it's how we're working with, with the grades and the hillside adaptive architecture wall. We're not meeting the hillside ordinance. There is enough slope on the site and the way to work with the site more effectively is by working with these grades. So Kathleen and, and Jeremy put a lot of work in and how to get this to work. And then we also ran this by staff and how this works out with the code requirements. And they were, they were fine with this as well. We think it'll be a very nice, attractive product. On the downhill side of this particular one, you have the garages down where the three story is. On some others, you access vehiculally from the uphill side. And in that case, you would have a garage coming in kind of on what would be the middle floor and then, then three stories of units on the, on the opposite side. This is the elevations of the clubhouse area, matching in with, with the styling that Cathexus has put forward with the residential. And these are, these are some different examples of other products that, that the group has done who's proposing this. In the upper right hand corner, I do want to point out that is the existing Monobello Fitness Room. The other pictures up here are from Folsom, Davis, Fort Lauderdale and Rockland. And they all range from kind of the low 200s in terms of number of units and some up to 450. So a little bit larger than what we're looking at here. But this denotes the quality with which they, this group works with and, and looks to carry forward in this project. I told you I'd get to the minor deviation. I told you I'd get to the minor deviation and we're just about near the end of my presentation, but I wanted to cover this particularly with you. Up in the right-hand corner, I've got a copy of the zoning map. If you notice that yellow really oddly shaped parcel there, that's actually the parcel that Harris owns, has the five billboards on it. That property is owned large lot residential, one, one dwelling unit per acre. There's a portion of code, it's eighteen oh four nine oh five A that requires that there be an additional setback when you're adjacent to a single-family residentially zoned property, which L L R one would fall under. Unfortunately, we, we can't just meet the standard setback for this, we have to go extra. So we had designed this and not realizing that that was an L L R one property because we know it'll never get used as a single-family lot. Well, we found out that the legal zoning on that property actually is single-family, so technically we need to, to do this and try and get some of the allowance for our setbacks to come back to what we can have on all the other areas of the property. But that's the reason for this major deviation. It's just in one area up on the northern end of the property that we needed, needed to get some relief there. So overall, forty-one point one-six acres. We meet the parking requirements, our unit sizes are down at that small to medium size that we feel will be, be positive. The, the allowed density overall on the site is fourteen dwellings per acre. We're actually at ten point five in what our density proposal is. We're just a little bit higher than what was approved twenty-plus years ago. And I, I want to go back to that and hearken back to that because this whole area had been viewed, this was one of the earlier things that was built up there off of Summit Ridge Drive, Montebello Apartments. And this had been envisioned to be part of that, it's just kind of been a slow goer. It's, it's out on a little peninsula there and, and we're looking forward to bringing this forward. We feel that this provides for completion of a project that was previously approved with similar density, provides a product type that's updated for today's market, provides unit sizes that meet that small to medium size and provides a continuation, it'll provide that continuation of the trail and pedestrian walkway linkages that already exist within Montebello. The previous approvals for eight hundred and sixty-four units were at eight hundred and eighty-two, you know, eighteen more than what was previously, previously approved. And then available for any questions is, as my team is as well.
Great, thank you so much. We have a presentation, Leah?
Yes, I do. Chairman, members of the commission, again, for the record, my name is Leah Brock, Assistant Planner with Development Services, City of Reno. I'm going to follow up on what Mr. Snellgrove covered, which he did a pretty thorough presentation. Again, the applicant has requested a conditional use permit to allow for the development of a four hundred and thirty-two unit multifamily residential development with amenities. The application includes a request for fills in excess of ten feet on approximately three percent of the forty-one acre site and a major deviation for a fifty percent reduction in the required setback between multifamily residential and single-family residential. Key issues related to this request include the overall site design, grading, traffic access and circulation, and that major deviation of the required setback. The subject parcel is located within the multifamily residential zoning district that allows for fourteen units per acre. Let's see, to the east is the multifamily residential apartment complex with the four hundred and fifty units and amenities. To the south is the chalk bluff water treatment plant and to the west is approximately a hundred acres of vacant land located in the large lot residential, one acre minimum zoning district. Staff does anticipate that that L L R one lot will be, come forward for a zoning change to something along the lines of mixed use in the near future. Subject site does have a master planned land use designation of mixed neighborhood and parks, greenways and open space. It's also within the foothills neighborhood per the structure plan framework. The development, the actual development is located within the mixed neighborhood portion and the P G O S designation will remain as undisturbed open space. As proposed and with the recommended conditions, the project is in substantial conformance with the master planned land use designation and the master planned goals and policies such as housing options, density and intensity, freeway corridors and connectivity. Briefly, Mr. Snellgrove covered all of this, but the overall site design includes four hundred and thirty-two multifamily residential units. Those units will range from eight hundred and twenty square feet to thirteen hundred and fifty square feet. Each unit will have a one-car garage, seven hundred and twenty-five onsite parking spaces, seven hundred and fifty-five trees are proposed with four thousand five hundred and thirty shrubs and there will be over fifteen acres of undisturbed open space. The proposed development area does utilize portions of a site that was previously graded as the extension or second phase of the apartment project to the east. The development proposes fills greater than ten feet in height with a maximum of nineteen point five and is limited to three point two-eight percent of the site. The majority of the grading does not exceed fills more than four feet in height and the limited grading and preservation of natural features does meet or exceed Reno Municipal Code standards. The applicant did submit a traffic study and all intersections are expected to operate at satisfactory level. As you can see in the image above, the access to the subject property can be off of McCarran, coming from either the north or the south. It does require looping up and around to get to the site and then access to the actual site will be through the existing Montebello apartment units. Emergency access road will need to be established prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Since that has not been established at this point, we are conditioning that as condition number six. I know that the applicant has been working with Home Depot and the property to the north to establish that access. Should that not become feasible or happen, there are some alternatives that I'll let the applicant discuss should you have any questions about that. Reno Municipal Code does require a twenty-foot setback between multifamily zoning districts and single fam, family zoning districts. As Mr. Snellgrove pointed out, the applicant has requested the major deviation to allow for a fifty percent decrease, taking it from twenty feet to ten feet. Again, the parcel to the north is an undeveloped narrow parcel adjacent to the freeway with six existing billboards on it. Staff recommends a six-foot concrete wall be erected along that north property line and the required wall will restrict access between the development and the interstate. It'll mitigate noise. It's consistent with the adjacent development to the east. However, since publishing the staff report, the applicant has requested that we change the verbiage of condition five and add what you see in red there, which is for any building abutting the north property line. So before the condition read, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, a six-foot concrete block wall shall be erected along the north property line. Again, the applicant has requested we change that for only the buildings that abut that north property line, that that must be built prior to the certificate of occupancy. Staff does support the change in that condition. The project was reviewed by various city divisions and partner agencies. Courtesy notices and hearing notices were sent out to surrounding property owners. We did receive three comments which have been in opposition to the project. Two were concerned with the reduction in the required setback and the third did not cite a specific concern. I believe also there was a fourth voicemail of opposition that I think you guys received With the recommended conditions of approval, the existing site appears to meet or exceed the code standards and addresses the applicable findings. Staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions listed in the staff report with the above amendment to condition number five. That does conclude my presentation. The recommended motion is on the screen and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the commission for disclosures, Commissioner Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received and read emails and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, same disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures. We'll now move on to public comment. Michelle, do we receive any request to speak forms?
Did not receive request to speak forms, no emails were received. We did receive a voicemail that we'll play for you right now and I don't believe anybody on Zoom is requesting to speak on this item. I don't see any hands up, so we'll play the voicemail now.
Yes, I'm commenting on L D C two-two dash zero 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 eight-four, the viewpoint apartments. That's an awful lot of apartments being built. It's hard to understand it without really seeing the plan and how big it is and so forth. But I totally disagree with this setback, changes in the twenty-foot setback or any of the changes in the setback. The setbacks allow light to come down onto the streets and building. We don't need for Reno to look like Manhattan. We don't need for the buildings to be right up on the sidewalk, there are way too many of those already. There's one on California next to the bank that's like that, it's ridiculous. So we need some, some green space, we need some light coming into the streets, we need the twenty-foot setback. Additionally, you sent out something about L D C two-three dash zero 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 three. I don't think any of us who aren't planners or developers have any idea what the difference is between M S and S M U, so we don't understand, you know, what, what we should be saying about it. So that should be clarified somehow in this little postcard.
And that's it for voicemails?
Thank you. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, come back to the commission for questions or comments. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave, a couple of questions for you. Thanks, Dave. So functionally, can you talk to me about how this apartment complex will interface with the existing one more from like an administrative perspective and it relates to access? Are we talking about different ownership, different operation? So how does that affect the interface at that boundary?
I'll have Christina Siegfried answer that from the operational standpoint. She knows far more than I do.
Thank you. I'm Christina Siegfried and I'm part of the asset team with the Ownership Group, which is a privately held family trust. The parcel is landlocked, you cannot access the back lot without going through the front property. As such, the parcels will always have to be together, they cannot be sold separately, so therefore they will be operated together. There's a current existing clubhouse at Montebello that is in the middle of being redone. There's a nine thousand square foot fitness center at that location and a, a already existing. We are looking at adding additional parking spaces in front of that space in order to handle additional traffic in and out without impacting the community. There is a community director there, an assistant, there would be added a bookkeeper and three additional leasing personnel for the management of the property. There will be a separate office in the viewpoint office for resident services so that we provide the level of customer service that is our expectation and our management. About every five years, if you were to look at one of our communities, we upgrade the aesthetics of them and maintain the capital improvements so that the property maintains looking in a condition so that we have the relationship with the residents that it is a well-maintained community. And the goal will be that the management out of the Montebello will provide equal service as we give currently for both communities moving forward.
Thank you, that's really helpful. And so just for clarification, the residents of either community will have access to the amenities respectively in each one of the.
No, so you can't, we're not going to put a fence and prevent them, but there will be different fob access for access into them and one of that is for security purposes so we know who is in, in these amenity spaces to manage for damage and management problems. They will be camered, they will be fobbed for access. The, the community center for the viewpoint is scheduled to be twelve thousand square feet with additional amenity spaces throughout the green space in the community. Pretty high-end type of amenities. We want a resort to style pool, we want a gaming center to address the residents that are, we consider all of age of our residents to be all of our residents and one of the things that we've seen in park comm, communities currently is that we do not build for the age of six to sixteen, sixteen and over, they can use the fitness center, under six, they use the top lot, but there's nothing for that in between to encourage family involvement. And that is one of the factors that we want to continue in doing viewpoint that currently is not available at Montebello. And we are currently in the process of improving the amenities at Montebello so that when viewpoint is built, there is comparable amenities between both communities to try and minimize any management issues between both sites of the resident differences.
Thank you for that clarification and I guess just one follow-up question. So the, the interface of, and at the pedestrian level through the communities, can a person in one, they'll be able to walk their dog through the other community and vice versa?
Correct. Where there is the border between Montebello and viewpoint, that you saw the green line on the map, there's a piece of dirt right there that belongs to Montebello that's not developed and that piece of dirt is, it's not, you could never build anything on it, but the concept is that that would become a dog park, tying the two communities together. Currently, while this was a vacant lot, it was used a lot for people's dog entertainment and so they used that walking path to go there and that path will stay going continuously along. We're hoping to enhance it with things like an outdoor exercise amenities so that that space continues to be a utilized space.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have a couple other questions, but I want to just see if anyone else wants to jump in here.
Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner Taylor?
Chairman. So there will be one access point for both communities, is that correct?
Correct.
One access for both viewpoint and Montebello?
You have to drive through viewpoint, or through Montebello in order to access viewpoint. So at one point, there was consideration of gating viewpoint and separating the two, but we were concerned about traffic backing up into Montebello. We wanted to keep the traffic flow going, so that idea went away. Trying, it's hard to explain to you that the management style of the Ownership Group is we don't like negative reviews, we want a good relationship with our residents. So in our design conversations, one of the top things is how is our residents and the people that live there going to accept as we expand this community, how do we make that cohesive relationship between the two?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, and a follow-up to that, and Lauren, I don't know if this is something that you look at in your traffic study, but essentially what we're talking about is new ADTs coming through a, a private parcel, which could have impacts on those residents. Is that something that you looked at? And if so, I'd, I'd be curious to hear about it. Thank you very much for your clarification on the operations.
Good evening, Lauren Chilton with Edway Transportation. Yes, at a high level we did and we wanted to make sure as, as well as the, the development team that we weren't overloading the existing roadway. I think the key aspect here is that we have a looped roadway. It's, it's not one roadway and it's, it's effectively two for most of, most of the area through Montebello. There's the, the, the first part of the entry is, is one road, but it's also quite wide and divided and it's high capacity. But then once you enter the, kind of the middle portion of, of Montebello, it splits and you can go either way around and that continues into the viewpoint project. So overall, yeah, we, we believe there's, you know, adequate capacity and it's a reasonable access plan, that's how it was master planned from day one and, and we think it's reasonable at a high level.
And, and there are also adequate traffic controls, speed controls, speed bumps, things like that to prevent people, you know, wanting to get through this existing community to, you know, their apartment in this other community, there are things in place to, or will be in place to prevent, you know, situations with people potentially speeding through and interactions with pedestrians.
There are, there are existing speed bumps throughout that main entry area, that, that first segment, if you will, that's the single lane roadway, there's, there's multiple speed bumps in there. We did not propose to add lots of them as they can become also obnoxious. But in, in general, yes, there's, there's adequate devices to, to manage. in general, yes, there's adequate devices to manage traffic.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have another question for Dave.
You're on a roll.
Okay.
Keep going.
Thanks. Dave, question on the parking and the capacity. I guess my first question is how does what is being proposed for this project in terms of capacity compare to the existing project to the east?
Yeah, I'm not sure how many they have in the previous, in the Montebello project. In other products that I've worked with of similar type and similar size and similar unit size, you know, the one parking space per unit that's pretty standard within the multi-family, we've exceeded that. We actually added in. I kind of wondered why we were adding in required parking just for a clubhouse alone, because everyone can potentially walk there. But we did add in extra spaces there. And then we went above and beyond with our common area parking. Each unit will have a one-car garage, so that's 432. And we were at, I think it was 725, I think, was our total that we provided. So we're almost another 300 parking spaces around, which took us to 1.68, which is actually in a pretty good range for this type of apartment project. Yeah, I'm not sure how many they have over and what the ratio is. I don't know if Christina or Bob know that number in terms of parking. If you can come up here, so it gets on the record.
I don't know it off the top of my head. I know we have garages. Some of the buildings at Montebello are townhouse units with town garages underneath, and others are eightplex buildings. And they can rent a garage. And then there's, every apartment has a carport. So if you don't have a garage that's attached to your unit, then the remainder of those have an assigned carport space. And then we have a lot of unassigned open parking spaces, so we never have parking problems. I know that, I'm pretty sure we're more than, we're right around one and a half per unit.
Okay, thank you.
Christine knows that product better. And they're, it sounds like they're relatively equivalent in terms of the number of parking spaces per unit that they're working at right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I can save it for discussion, but I just want to say now, Dave, so you know, I mean, I'm a little bit concerned that this might actually be overparked at 1.6 per unit. I mean, essentially, what's happening here is we're taking away space on the parcel that could otherwise be dedicated to other uses, you know, open space amenities and that sort of thing. We're, you know, creating parking spaces when maybe they're not really needed.
I have that happen on a lot of different projects where you take the stab at it. You look at what the parking ratio is in the municipality, and then you have to look at what your relievers are. And oftentimes, you end up with parking on an adjacent street. Well, we don't really have that opportunity here. We have Montebello, which has their own parking, and we have this that has its own parking. But there's not an adjacent street for public parking. So we have to err on the side of caution oftentimes, and I hope you understand that. If it were different, and we had some streets and we had some type of relief, we might have a little bit more flexibility. I think 1.5 to 1.68, which is where we're at and where it sounds like Montebello's at, that's where I see a lot of these coming in right now in terms of garden-style or some of the urban infill apartments as well.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Chairman, I have one other question, but I can't remember what it is, so I'm going to stop there for now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. So maybe I'll start with Leah. I mean, when I look at this, it's the addition of, you know, 18 units, which isn't that big of a deal. Well, I shouldn't say it's not that big of a deal. But it's from stuff that was approved back in 1995. So now we're seven years later. No, we're much, a lot more than that. Anyways, my question is, like, I don't see anything in here for RTC trip reduction plan, and I'm sure that wasn't part of the original approvals. Is that something that we need to be looking at now for this with the addition? If we look at the big picture, we're adding 400-plus more units, so we're going to have over 800 units one access for all those. Is that something that we normally would see within development like this?
Well, I'm still new with the city. And this is my first multifamily residential that I've done. But we did receive comments from RTC, and those comments were forwarded to the applicant. And he can probably speak a little bit more about what RTC said, but it wasn't anything out of the norm of what they normally say that you have to comply with. So I'm not-
Okay, I don't think it was in here, the letter or anything?
No, no. It usually only included if it's something that's going to be required, and they didn't have any requirements.
Okay. So what about one access for more than 800 apartments? Is that something that we would normally see? Maybe Jason-
It's not anything that is in Reno Municipal Code that would not meet the code standards.
Okay. So it's acceptable for, not looking at the 400, but over 800?
Yes. There's nothing, there's nothing in Reno Municipal Code that restricts that.
Okay. And then I have a traffic question. Thanks, Leah. Thanks, Lauren. When was the traffic study done?
Oh, just a few months ago. It's dated-
Okay, there wasn't a date on the page that we, that I saw.
June, we issued it June 10.
Okay. Did you look at any of the traffic volumes further north at the I-80 exits and entrance?
We did not study the interchange for the reason that the project's generating about 200 peak-hour trips. And there's long-term plans to widen McCarran up in that area. So we didn't delve into that in detail. But in the long-range plan, there is, there are improvements planned.
Okay. And then my next question, what, how far out did you look in the traffic? Because it could be another three to four years before this is built out, I think, if I'm looking at the phasing.
We did an existing condition scenario and also a 20-year horizon.
A 20-year horizon. And all levels of services were sufficient?
All policies maintained at all studied intersections, yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Hey, Mike, are you, can you hear us? Mike, Michelle?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
I have a traffic question. I know that shocks you. When you look at this and the current traffic study and the new traffic that's going to be on there, do we need to consider anything north on McCarran? Or are you satisfied with what this traffic study has provided? And I just have an excerpt that I'm reading in our packet.
I am comfortable with the traffic study as presented.
Okay, thanks, Mike. That might be a standard answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any further questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, actually, just following along, probably is the second part of what Commissioner Taylor was going. Dave, obviously, we touched on it briefly in the staff presentation, and there was some information about the requirements for a secondary entrance into here. I see from the plans, there's an anticipated route that's coming in from the north through Home Depot and, you know, I guess weaving through the billboards on the site north of-
It doesn't really weave, but it, yeah, it goes by them.
Can you, can you talk to me about where, where that is in terms of kind of where you're at with what's planning on and what the alternatives would be if that doesn't happen?
Certainly. I have a slide. If you could bring my presentation back up, please, Michelle. I have a slide just in case this question came up. And motor through here. Oh, no, I think it's right down there. Okay, so the blue dashed line follows along the Harris property. It goes to the south of the billboards. There's already a graded, I want to call it a little bit more than a two-track road. It's fairly well-traveled that goes out into the Home Depot parking lot. There's already some easements in there for Harris' access. And we've been working with Harris', and Harris' parts have been going well on Home Depot. We've got some more negotiations to do with them. We're hopeful that we can get that. It would basically use their driveway, which is the same way that Harris' is going right now, come down their entry. And then, we talked to fire. They don't want us coming back to the main intersection there that goes up to Home Depot, goes into Montebello, the Summit Ridge Drive. So you can see it goes past what is 7-Eleven there, and then comes back down. So that way, we have two points of access. If something happened, and talking to Trey Palmer, if something happened at that main intersection, that's the day-to-day entry, this gives a secondary route that gets you to another point. We fully understand that. Now, if something happened where we ended up not being able to get that, we've got two other access. One of them, we're in control of because it's on the Montebello property, which is just to the, just to the east of us. Now, this one would, would take the existing, there's an eight-foot, I think it's an eight-foot wide path, the pedestrian path's fairly wide. And we looked at that. Some parts might need to be get pulled away from the, from the existing units, and those would be moreover towards the western side where it says RNO. And down below that, we'd see that might need to get pulled away from the units. But the rest of it would be widening out that path to get the appropriate fire and emergency access lane. Where this connects in on that little cloverleaf loop, there's already an access point that serves as the, as the clean-out area for the detention basin that's at the entry to Montebello. So we'd already be utilizing something. Keep in mind, I know that's NDOT, but this would be a gated emergency access type situation that we'd be working with. If there was a problem with that one, and this, this one's the least desirable, the purple one that goes over, and that actually goes to the Hyzer Family Trust piece that is likely going to be coming forward with his own change and some different development plans. The unfortunate part of that one, there's that two-track road that travels along the, by the billboards, kind of continues on, but it actually goes into NDOT's right-of-way. Had conversations with Alex Wolfson, Alex is no longer with NDOT, he's now here with Public Works. But my conversations with Alex, he said, yeah, that's something that could probably work, but the challenge to it is because it's a highway, you get FHWA in there. So he said, he's seen situations where they've been fine with it, and then they send it on to FHWA, and it might take them three-quarters of a year to, a year to go through their process. And then FHWA says, no, we're not going to do it. So it's a riskier proposition that way. I will point out that, the pinker line that we have south of Montebello, that's actually in their control. And because it would have more grading with it, it's our second choice, not our first choice.
Thank you for walking me through that.
No problem.
I will, maybe just, since Commissioner Taylor woke him up, if Mike Michelle can maybe weigh in and make sure that he's okay with any of the options that have been presented here.
Yeah, I am familiar with all the options that Dave has presented, and I'm confident that there is a solution amongst the several options that he presented.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Sorry for the crack about waking you up. I just couldn't help myself. Sorry about that. You're not here in the room.
I'll go back.
Thanks, Mike. I have maybe one more question for Dave. And maybe this is an observation in terms of, you spoke a lot about the hillside adaptive style of architecture, which I can appreciate. However, one of the things I noticed is that some of the hillside adaptive architecture you're doing is actually forcing you into some of the 10-foot fills that we're doing here. So was there a consideration of, I know there was a limitation in terms of the number of facilities and like the style, but was there a consideration in some of those of maybe not trying to force a hillside adaptive architecture onto a site that you're actually having to create the hill?
I'll answer a brief part of that, but I'm going to ask Jeremy Packer to come up and talk about a lot of this in terms of their vision. Some of this, some of what we went through initially was taking a look at this site and envisioning what it was and trying to take advantage of what this site does offer. And that site offers views, not only along the edge, but building some of the units up and getting views out over the tops of some of the buildings that are on that edge. So with that, I'd like to have Jeremy come up and talk about some of the architectural styling, what went into that. He thought longer and harder about it than I would.
You know, the rest of the commission doesn't want the two architects talking right now. So you're going to have, you're going to have to make this brief. Sorry.
It's trouble. I'll make it brief, Jeremy Packer, for the record. And actually, the architecture really was secondary to dealing with access and the roadways in order to make accessibility for the pedestrians as well as the cars work and pedestrian access into the buildings. A lot of that grade fill actually came up from the roadways to get those roadways to be gentle as they step up, as well as the two-and-a-half-story requirement. So you get kind of a doubling effect for those. But we tried to integrate those into the hillside as much as possible. And what Dave alluded to was maximizing those views. So these buildings are designed to fit into the hillside so each unit could look out their living spaces over the top of the other ones, out to the valley.
Thank you for that. And I guess the follow-up to that is, is there a limit where a three-story can't be done on this site? So you have to limit it to the two-and-a-half story with the cut?
That's correct. It has to be two-and-a-half story because of the MF14.
Okay. So if we didn't have that hillside adaptive architecture, it would be a two-story unit would be the limitation to what you could do.
Right. It would be a two-story building sitting on the site. Right.
All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Move into discussion?
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Dragic. Yeah, no, I think we got my, the thing that jumps off the page the most was the traffic. I used to live there, and then I took a drive-through there. I think there's a lot to be said about that wider feel going in through those first two main roads. But I feel like we covered that ad nauseam. I guess the thing that jumped off was the intersection with the gas station to the northwest and entrance into Montebello. But it looks like Mike dropped the hammer, and he feels good about it. It sounds like, you know, those trips can be handled at that intersection. And I travel it a lot. It really is relatively smooth. So we covered pretty good there, what I was worried about.
Thank you. Did you live in the Montebello apartments?
Yeah.
I'm very jealous because that gym looks incredible.
Yes. It was 20 years ago. It was a kiddo. Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
So I think I need some commissioners' help here. And I'm open, to me, this, I know that it was approved back in 1995, which is 27 years ago. I use my calculator. It's 27. But the addition of 400 more units, even though it was previously approved, I feel like it needs to be looked at a little bit more. I don't know if RTC was looking at it as there's 18 more units, or if they were looking at it as there's 400 more units. It just seems like a lot of, a lot of more housing on the infrastructure. And I think McCarran backs up pretty regularly there, especially at I-80. So I'm just looking for some help getting your guys' level of comfort. I know it meets code the way it is. I'm just wondering if we're looking at this in the bigger picture of 1,000, you know, 880-something apartments that was approved 27 years ago, and then it could be built out. We're looking at another three or four years. What's going to happen then? That's where I'm at. But I'm open to suggestions and your wisdom, all of you.
I'll start. I don't know if I have wisdom, but I have some thoughts here. I do travel that area every day. And there is regular backup, but knowing that the McCarran loop is something that RTC is continually looking at to make sure that, because it's the main arteria of the entire area, that gives me a little bit of comfort not really worrying about it, because I know it's going to be taken care of. I know that's something they can't let fall into ruin, like the North Valley, some of the areas up there have. So that gives me some comfort there, so I do not worry about that. I use that Home Depot every other day. I've never had problems getting in and out of there, getting on the freeway there, other than getting right to McCarran and I-80's never been an issue. So I don't see any issues with it. In the short term, maybe. In the long term, which is, you know, only a couple of years, I don't see it being a big deal, so.
I think I, I think I share that perspective, especially with the, I guess, the way that you drive up the loops. It seems like they cut down on the traffic because you're not really stopping. I drive that area a lot as well, and I kind of share that perspective. But I hear what you're saying, and I guess I'd be curious if, how RTC looked at it. But I do feel pretty comfortable.
And I guess it's, I'm sorry, Commissioner Chairman, I guess it's just, or, Mr. Chairman, it's not just the traffic, but the whole development as a whole. Is there anything that we're not looking- that we're not looking at that we should be looking at? And maybe that's for Leah. I mean, I think we have the access covered. They can't build anything until they have another access, which makes me feel a little bit more comfortable. RTC, McCarran, maybe I'm just talking out loud here because I haven't got a chance to in a while. Thanks.
I guess, Leah or Jason, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah. Jason Garcia-Laboo, Plating Manager, for the record. Yeah. So in these situations, we really depend on our outside agencies providing feedback on whether or not we should add conditions and things like that. And through staff analysis, as Mike pointed out, as well as kind of working with RTC, typically we'll receive conditions that address these issues. In this circumstance, it was satisfactory for the development, and so that's in staff's opinion. And as mentioned in the staff report, we feel it's adequate. But as some of the other commissioners have mentioned as well, you know, that McCarran is pretty high up on the list. And so again, I think staff feels pretty comfortable with where it's at.
That's good enough for me. Thanks, Jason.
Mr. Chair, Mike Michelle is, he has his hand raised.
Oh, yes. Mike, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah. RTC did comment on the traffic study, and they indicated that, their comment was that Summit Ridge Drive remained at a Level of Service D, and that's what the traffic study says. And so they're okay with the study. And, and as, you know, I, my father lives in the assisted living place there. I go there every day. I've gone there every day for the last three years, and I've never really seen a traffic issue with, with that intersection. So that's just kind of anecdotal comment.
Thank you very much.
Mike Michelle's awake.
I, I will hit, I will hit snooze again.
Thanks. I don't remember, I don't think we had the full RTC report in our packet. I don't remember seeing it. So thank you very much for clarifying. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to respond to you, Commissioner Taylor, something that you brought up in your comments earlier, your questions, was the requirement for some sort of trip reduction program. I didn't see that in our conditions, and we see that a lot of time for other projects. Was that something that staff considered for this?
Leah Brock, for the record. Mike Michelle would probably be the best person to answer that question again. But I did pull up the comments from RTC, and I just wanted to read it into the record. Okay? So RTC has reviewed the request for the conditional use permit to develop a 432-unit multifamily residential apartment complex, grading with fills 10 feet or greater in height, and a major deviation to allow 50% reduction in the required 20-foot setback between multifamily zoning district and single-family zoning district. RTC concurs with the recommendations stated in the memorandum attached with this application. The applicant should follow the recommendations as a condition of approval. No further comments. The policy Level of Service standard for Summit Ridge Drive is Level of Service D. Policy LOS for intersection, for intersections should be designed to provide a level of service consistent with maintaining the policy level of service of the intersecting corridor. The project should be required to meet all the conditions necessary to complete road improvements to maintain that level of service standards. And then it just goes on. If you have any questions, please contact this person. And that's, that was the comments from RTC.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's not in here. We have like one page from a traffic report.
And I apologize for that.
Oh, no.
Usually I only include it if there's something major in the comments, but in the future, I will include the comments from RTC.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike, Mike, do you have any thoughts on Commissioner Gowers' question about a trip reduction program?
Oh, yeah. That was part of their comment, and, and that was that the applicant is encouraged to contact RTC in regards to, in regards to that particular program. So the applicant is directed to contact and coordinate with RTC in regards to that program.
If the commission would entertain a condition requiring that, I would be interested to include that in a motion.
Can we just ask the applicant what their thoughts were?
You get Dave Snolgrove and Christina.
Double whammy.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you're trying to figure out ways to reduce the cars on the road and provide, use public transportation. Is that what you're asking? Would we support that?
Correct.
I don't see a problem in supporting that.
Great. And just for clarification, I think what we're talking about here is that information would be provided from RTC to you as the community administrator to distribute to residents, alerting them to the fact that these programs exist and how to get more information about it.
So we have a move-in video that is sent to the residents, explaining to them the services that are available to them, and we would have no problem in incorporating that into our move-in packet and making it available. We also do monthly resident functions that that information could be available in any of our community centers in order to support that.
Fantastic. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I have just a couple of comments. Actually, one of the, to follow up on Commissioner Taylor's, one of the, the questions that I had, and I appreciated Commissioner Gowers' questions, was the, not, not so much the 400 units getting out to the street, but it was the 400 units running through the existing facility and how that was going to be. And I think understanding better how these two are going to relate to each other with that sort of common level of management and everything else, I think, helps to alleviate that problem as well. So that, you know, was one of the concerns that I had. The second thing I wanted for discussion, it didn't come up in any of our questions, was the request for the major deviation for the setback reduction. And I appreciated that, you know, obviously, we got a voicemail about it. I did look at this because that's certainly something that jumps out at me whenever I see both deviation and major in the same comment, and it talks about setbacks. However, in this case, I'm, I, I see no issues with it because it is to a parcel that is largely undevelopable. So all of the reasons for having that setback in there in the first place really don't exist in this situation. So while I, I know we normally take a much harder look at this, it didn't come up in discussion, and I think that's appropriate because in this case, there isn't anything that we're really impacting by doing this. So I just wanted to get that out there on the record, since it is one of the items that we're weighing in on tonight, and just wanted to, you know, make sure there wasn't any additional discussion on that since we hadn't had any here. So, thank you.
I appreciate you putting that information on the record. Thank you. Is anybody ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, real quick, pulling up amended commission, condition number five as well. I know they, we kind of glossed over that. Can we bring it back up, Michelle? And Leah, as you're pulling up, maybe just going over why you guys added that in, just for clarity's sake.
Yes, thank you. Leah Brock, for the record. The only thing that we've really changed again is that we had in there prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, a six-foot concrete block wall shall be erected along the north property line. Since this is going to be constructed in phases, we don't necessarily need to condition that that six-foot concrete wall be erected prior to the first certificate of occupancy, because the first certificates of occupancy may be nowhere near there. The applicant has requested that we modify that condition to add that it, that that first certificate of occupancy for any building abutting that north property line. To staff, that makes sense, and we do support that change in Furbage.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more discussion item before it moves on, and that was to the, the other finding that we're making for the 10-foot fills. I appreciated the conversation from the applicant and from staff with respect to what we're doing there. I do think in, in the discussion about sort of using that to not only help with the housing, but to assist with accessible circulation, to minimize the slopes of the roads, and to make the pathways more accessible. So I think it's interesting because typically hillside adaptive architecture, you're not almost creating much of the hill when you're doing it. You're sort of reacting to it, and this is a little bit opposite of that, but I appreciate what they're doing. And as a result, I can make the findings, even though they're not so much based on the existing topography. So I'm just going down my checklist of all the things I need to make sure I've mentioned. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Is anybody ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Thank you. In case number LDC22-00084, Viewpoint Apartments, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve this conditional use permit and major deviation subject to the conditions listed in their staff report with the recommended change to condition number five and the addition of a condition number seven that would require the distribution of trip reduction materials from the RTC that the applicant has so willingly agreed to distribute.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Dragic, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. So, too long, too short? We'll be back here at 7:55 PM.
Hill areas and that starts through our hillside development and some of those that starts to restrict that density and so that density restricts and go down and so though we're not seeing that SF3 and SF3, we're seeing a similar density and we're and and through our next case you'll see that they're using clustering and some other mechanisms to to do that. Looking at the findings, that compatibility I went through complies with our master plan, our Reno Municipal Gold and NRS, our public service and utilities are available, they're in close proximity and it's not detrimental to public health, safety and welfare. Additionally, you have received several emails over the last couple of days related to concerns and I think with that, I will go into those concerns, I think they'll be more appropriate to talk with with through the tentative map and the conditional use process and we can move through some of those. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I leave you with two motions, one for the master plan and one for the zoning map amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Come back to the commission for disclosures. Start with Commissioner Gower.
Mr. Chairman, I have previously visited this site, perceived and read multiple emails and spoke with applicants representative.
Thank you.
Commissioner Munoz, I received and read emails and previously visited the site.
Commissioner Dracula, I've spoke with the applicant and read and received emails.
Sorry, Commissioner Taylor, I read and received emails and corresponded with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson received and read the emails and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Velto saying disclosures? Now move to public comments. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forums?
I did not receive any request to speak forums. We did receive 21 emails in opposition of this project. There were no voicemails and nobody has their hand up in Zoom, so I think we're good on the public comment portion.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Back to the commission for questions.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. John, I think this question is for you. I'm hoping that we can put up, you had a good map in your presentation, but I'm hoping that we have a map that we can reference to help address the compatibility of the project with adjacent land uses.
I have one, if I could go to the overhead because it was on the, I had to break these into two different presentations, but rather than going to that one, I could just pull up this map. Can we, can we switch over? I'm not sure how easy or not this is. Could you zoom, what is that, zoom in, zoom out? Depends on how your head works. Thank you very much. There's the big picture. Is that what you're looking for, Commissioner Gower?
It is, yeah, and I'm just looking at it and digesting it for a second.
Yeah. The idea here was rather, you know, it's black and white, but the idea here was that it shows a little more detail with the footprints that have been approved for canyons, the band of development for Canyon's Edge and then DP2 as proposed and of course Palisades exists today.
Thank you. I actually don't think I have any questions. It's just very informative to to see this. I think it provides a useful context for understanding where this fits in with the broader, you know, development.
Yeah.
That's occurred and is planned to occur in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, question for Brooke.
Thank you, John. Just want a little more, I think you touched on it in your presentation, I was just looking for a little more clarification. So obviously when we looked at your zoning, it shows that this is SF8, which as you mentioned was the higher end as opposed to the SF3 that's next to it, but you made a comment about, you know, developability and how this is actually compatible even though we're not seeing that in the numbers on the map. Could you maybe just explain that a little bit further as to what you meant by that?
Certainly. So I think if we look at that Palisades development, that's approximately 300 acres that they're looking there and the amount of homes there and how those, so they're in SF3, but if you kind of take that out, they're 900, could build up to 900 homes. Now they're going to be restricted through our development standards and one of those is our hillside development standards, which starts to restrict development as it gets steeper. So as we're moving up those foothill develop, foothill areas and this is in that master plan foothill structure form within our master plan, those hillside development standards start to to grab hold a little bit more to say on the density. So it starts to really restrict that density. And so what we see is, sometimes what we'll see is there'll be a request for a little bit higher density because they're restricting and then they're clustering those down within a unit. I think where we saw that would be a good example is the Rancho Four development that was before this in over just off North Virginia, approximately 300 town home units. They had a an MF14 zoning on that property, but it came into the hillside. By the time the hillside, it really started to restrict that down and what they did, that preserves that natural open space and some of those other things when they cluster.
Okay, so based on, if I can summarize in the way that I think I heard, so even though the allowable number of units on a straight two dimensional map like this may be 64.
Correct.
For, you know, the the code, even if we make this revision, is going to limit how much of that property can actually be developed, which would then make the overall number of units more in line with what it would be straight zoned as an SF3.
You said that much clearer than I guess. So we have eight acres, we have eight units per acre, 64, but with applying our hillside development standards, we're really coming down into where we're seeing one unit per point four. We're seeing approximately two units per acre would be allowed.
Okay, so to that compatibility issue that we're looking at for this specific one, the intensity that we see on a map is actually regulated separate from that to make these, in in staff's mind, the the ability to build on this is commensurate with what the adjacent parcels are even though the zoning is different?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion? Maybe like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to quick clarification from legal if we're looking for, as we saw, separate motion for master plan and zoning or rolled into one like is in our staff report?
I think the recommendation was to have separate motions on both the master plan amendment and then zoning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to just make one comment because we did receive a lot of public comment on on this. It relates to this item. Some, a lot of people addressed the master plan amendment and zone change too. And I just want to respond to that on the record. You know, it does present a concern really anytime that, you know, we're proposing any sort of development on a hillside and sort of the the edge of the city essentially here. I mean, to really, because we're right up against the city boundary. But, you know, I think the decisions regarding the, you know, annexing this property and then looking at the this map and that one that was showed earlier about the showing the development in this area, you know, I think it's really a compelling image that this is really just a piece that's completing that puzzle of development that's been planned for this area for a while now. So it it helped me frankly to kind of zoom out and be able to see that a little bit more because when you do look at it just on its face and, you know, it's kind of adding to some development in this area, it's easy to, you know, potentially get worked up about it about it, but I just wanted to to put that on the record that, you know, looking at that compatibility finding, it did help to see see it in that bigger picture and I can make that finding. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
One more question to that end. Commissioner Gower's comments reminded me, Brooke, if you can, is there any, I'm looking at the the map here and I saw the boundary for the city of Reno. Is anything in those areas that aren't colored here, are we in a situation where the adjacent properties are part of the sphere of influence or are those purely county properties that aren't currently under any city of Reno anticipated annexation?
So those are, all those surrounding properties are within the sphere of influence. So they under, they are under the city of Reno jurisdiction. They could annex in the future if if they, you know, with the adjacency and the annexation standards that are required.
Okay.
That really, we see that sphere of influence going all the way east to the Washoe County line and then going a little bit further south in this area.
All right, so as a part, so what we're seeing here, yes, we are at the edge of the city of Reno, but if that adjacent parcel wanted to do any development, it actually gets reviewed by the city of Reno because it's under the sphere of influence.
Correct, and they could, they could, it would be under our jurisdiction to review that. Then additionally, you know, if they decided to annex, then we would go through this master plan zoning map process and determine what the appropriate master plan and zoning would be at that time.
Okay, but none of that is a part of what we're.
No, currently, currently this is the edge of the city of Reno as far as what has been annexed into the city of Reno.
Okay.
And that we would service and provide those additional services, utilities and that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Munoz?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. That was actually where I was going to go with my next question, the sphere of influence and what's going on there. And really in Reno, especially in North Valleys, we're out of places to build. And with this still being in city limits, listening to all the concerns and everything that we got from from the emails and and the messages, it's a very short term portion of that entire area that eventually be built out because there are just nowhere else to build here. Eventually, we will move out that way. And so like Commissioner Gower said, it is pretty easy to make the findings for that because it is just completing the piece of puzzle there. So I'm in complete agreement with you.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion in case number LDC 22-00048 DP2 Master Plan and Zoning Amendment Based Upon Compliance With Applicable Findings. I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend that city council adopt the master plan. Are we doing this as one motion, Carl?
No, we're going to be two, so.
Okay.
Alls you have to do is just say subject to conformance review by the Truckee Meadows, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. Then we'll do a separate one for the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, master plan subject to conformance by TMRPA.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'll second that motion and I can make the findings for that.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. We're now move to the second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the zoning map amendment, same case number LDC 22-0048 Based Upon Compliance With Applicable Findings, I move to adopt the amendment to the zoning map amendment and recommend that the city council do so as well, subject to, no, that's not subject to conformance by TRPA. So we'll just end it there.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Munoz, I'll second.
Commissioner Munoz, be you to it.
He did.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item number 4.6, which is LDC 22-00082, which I think is related. So, John, if you want to lead us.
Brother, thank you. Thank you, Chair Velto, John Kropodick for the record representing the applicant, Dolan Properties Two. So in summary, this is a tentative map for 18 townhomes and conditional use permits for fills greater than 10 feet. The cuts part is not kicked in, it's only fills, cluster development, hillside development, and then a minor deviation as noted in the staff report. And of course, we know where the site is located, south of the Palisades project and just down the hill and south of the Canyons project. That one, you know, it's easier on the eyes. We talked about that big picture map I would like to show out on in this one is, again, the canyons, little bit to the north, Canyon's Edge, the Tumwa Tank, and then the Palisades for reference. There's the map that we talked about with the footprints of the approved projects that's just duplicate to the one I showed on the overhead. So here is the project concept. You can see that road that was stubbed out years ago in the Palisades that provides the access with the access easement that was granted to this property owner at that time, annexed in 2007 as I believe Brooke mentioned. The concept is environmentally sensitive site design with respect to grading and clustering, uses the flatter part of the sites. I'm going to get into a slope map that you can see that we tried to be really diligent on managing the placement of the house footprints and the placement of the road. Cluster with townhome product, again, that gives us the best way to manage the way we're using two acres of an eight acre site or 2.26 acres. We preserve the stand of trees. You can see them on here. I'll get to them in a better map. Really important to the environmental considerations in this process and you can see a lot of dots to the south of the property and the south of the water tank there. Minimal grading needed for the road. And then at this point, why are we here today? It's because 15 years later, we have the key elements of backbone infrastructure in place. The last one was the water tank that did a discovery that included this property, these 18 units plus canyons plus Canyon's Edge. And so that's obviously a key piece of public infrastructure that's needed to go further down the road with planning. So we now have water that's in place, at least the plan for it, roads and sewer. Of course, the capacity has already been demonstrated to accommodate these 18 lots. There it is in Zoom. So again, you can see the stand of trees that's on the south end of the property and then, you know, expands over east, south of the water tank. Important consideration, there's very few trees that are being disturbed in the way that we have this site design and the way that we have this graded. And then you can see the lines on the other side, the downhill side of the units. Of course, that's where we have the walls on the other side of the townhome units. There's the slope map, you know, what better tool than that? It's it's pretty fundamental, right? Says where do we want to put lots and where we want to put road. And we've concentrated almost entirely to that flat area of the site. We did meet with Reno Fire Department on this, by the way, so we have the cul-de-sac that ends typically. We try to actually load lots on cul-de-sacs. They're very livable, they're very desirable by homeowners. It simply doesn't work here, so it ends up being a turnaround done to their satisfaction with the single means of access, parking one side, and then fire sprinklers in addition for fire access. I think this is very helpful. If you look at how tight the light green area is to the road and how tight it is to the footprint of development, that's that's the easiest way for me to understand what we're doing with regard to grading. It's not running down the hill, it's not running up the hill, it's very tight to the footprint. And so, you know, it just shows that we're basically following contour lines parallel to the Tumwa Road and then coming to the site. And as we've shown on the slope map, the, it fits, it fits very close to the topo as it's laid out. This has been unique. We shared this with you in the Canyon's Edge project and it's important here as well. So we have the purple line that shows the horse fencing. We've worked with Tracy Wilson of, I think it's Wild Horse Connection. We actually met with her and the applicant and staff to define where the fencing is going to go and where this new gate standard. This has been adopted in the PUD of which the commission acted on recently. And so now we have a pedestrian pass through grate in the green triangle, the vehicle gate with a cattle guard as detail B, the stubs right at the north end of the property, and then the locked emergency horse gate is detail C that would be on the north end, and then two of them as appropriate done to, I believe, to the satisfaction of the of the wild horse advocates. This has been a huge political issue and a huge community issue, you guys know here, and we think we have a pretty good handle on it. There is the gate details in a little more standard, A is the pedestrian pass through, B again is the vehicle gate with the cattle guard, and C is the locked emergency horse gate. And with that, I think that's all I have. I'd be glad to get into this discussion about density. Basically, we have, you know, as Brooke talked in the zoning, 2.26 acres times eight, that gets us to the 18. The rest is done in open space. Very much environmentally sensitive site design is what drives it all. So I'll leave it at that and thank you very much. Wait for questions.
Thanks, John. Brooke?
Once again, good evening. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner with Development Services. Good case before you, LDC 22-00082 DP2. Once again, this is approximately an eight acre site. We're looking just up from Damani Ranch there as we we previously went through. The request for this is, the request is for a tentative map, conditional use permit and a minor deviation. Now, a minor deviation is a little new to this this group. This is normally something we do administratively. We did discuss this and I'll go into it a little bit more detail in my presentation. We discussed this with the applicant. They were open for transparency to bring it before this body and have this body make that decision so that we're not coming back and changing density later after the fact, after we've seen the tentative map. There is that associated master plan and zoning map that was both recommended to move to city council. And then the key issues we're looking at is that site and building design, grading and protecting the environmental features. Once again, just coming a little bit closer, we are just under the the D there. Just to the right, we see the water tank, largely undeveloped land around that, the Palisades project site to the north and west. So once again, we just went through the zoning. This is all determined on this zoning being approved. So we are working on the SF master plan amendment. And then when we look at the zoning, we're going to be working with that SF8 zoning map amendment. As we look at the project itself, what they are proposing is to cluster 18 townhome units. They're using rockery walls on that lower section and upper section. Those are six foot rockery wall lifts. They're similar to what we're seeing throughout Palisades as they come up and start to terrace up. They are required through the conditions of approval to use neutral colors. There will be permanent open space. It's approximately six acres of the, the entire site will be for open space. That will be accessible to the public, maintained by the HOA. And then we are looking at that minor deviation. So a minor deviation allows us to modify our design standards and requirements by up to 10%. And so what they have chosen to apply it to in this situation is our hillside development standards. So this, doing the hillside development calculations would allow for 14 units. With that modification, it allows up to the additional four units modifying a design standard within code, which they are allowed to do by the minor deviation. Staff did review that. We felt that the overall impact of those four units was minimal. We're not seeing additional traffic. We don't feel that there's a highly visible impact with adding those units. And then really with that clustering, it's using that land more efficiently to bring those units in. Additionally, that townhome project has a very small footprint, so we're able to tie that in really, really tight so that density isn't as impactful as we'd see maybe a 5,000, 8,000 square foot lot going in there with the home and how they grade and fencing. And then additionally, we have that open space, which we're not going to be see fenced where we would in a private situation. Just coming in a little bit closer on the site, a little better photo of of the number of trees, existing trees that do exist there and will be maintained. That's one of the benefits that we see in that foothill area and some of those policies that we push to do is that clustering helps to preserve those natural areas. And you can see a number of trees are being preserved in that. Quickly going over that overall fencing plan, we're looking at, this is looking at the PUD fencing plan that we just did. And I'm showing this just because we went through an extensive process with the horse advocates on this of where the fences should be, but really we've learned a lot. And a lot of that is learning about gates, learning about vandalism is probably one of the biggest things we face on the Virginia range, the destruction of the gates, the destruction of the fences. And so really, we work to help get that enhanced fencing and gate standards through that Canyon's PUD. And then we've applied that to this particular situation as John outlined. We have those enhanced fire standards, those are the wooie standards that are applied. We've seen those on Ventana Ridge, Rancho Four with signage. Additionally, sprinklers will be required in these 18 units and they will be, the cul-de-sac itself is the emergency turnaround that will be painted red and posted, no parking on that. We have requirements for some wildlife management plan. They need to reach out to Endow and provide, make sure that we are meeting all the requirements and and any concerns are being addressed through their development. They're preserving the existing trees, as I mentioned. And then additionally, we're using water wise landscapes. We're requiring all that be water wise in their landscapes. There are additional standards too within our code for the proximity to that Virginia range to limit turf and some other things in this area. So just showing that side of that. But here, once again, going through these gates, I think what is really unique that we're seeing now is starting to get pedestrian passage gates in there that don't have to be opened. So they're either where you walk around or they call them a kiss gate. And so the gate is always closed, no matter which way you go. And we're hoping that will help keep some of the fences from being left open, also destroyed. We've gone up to a much more sturdy build of any sort of vehicular gate. A lot of what we've been putting in are the the standard green panel gates and what we're finding is either there people are running through them or they're just pushing up against them and knocking them over because they don't want to get out. This situation will help to prevent that. Additionally, we'll have signage of NRS standards and other standards on those gates, so it's very clear. Those have the standard cattle guard with the hoof guards for the horses underneath that. Additionally, we're putting in additional six foot fences to help, there's a couple places located in case the horses do get down in the suburbs, that they're able to move those up and get them safely back up on the Virginia range. So it also should be noted in our, just recently with the Canyon's PUD, there were additional verbal agreements by the applicant of the Canyon's PUD on that, the eight homes and the Dolans, which is the Virginia 40s, that they've come in with some other agreements that they are working with the horse advocates to provide some additional discretionary feeding areas, working with them to help secure some water and some other things so that the goal is to move those horses further up the range and provide that safety, both for the horses and for the public. So moving down the tentative map conditional findings, that compatibility I went over, we do comply with the master plan, RMC and NRS. Public service utilities are available or are planned in the area and then we provide that open space and hillside constraints were addressed. I would leave you with two motions today just because we do have that minor deviation that on there is a little different. So there's the initial tentative map that would approve for those 14 homes and then that minor addition would, that minor deviation would allow for those additional four. So with that, I'll leave you with these motions and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll come back to the board or to the commission. We'll come back to the board or to the commission for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson received and read emails and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. The button's not working.
Commissioner Dracula, same disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz read and read emails.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Received and read emails, previously visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures. Public comment. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forums?
We did receive correspondence for this item. There were 36 total and all word opposition. We did not receive any voicemails, and it doesn't look like anybody on Zoom wants to do public comment, and we don't have any requests to speak forums either.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public like to speak? The nun will close public comments. Back to the commission for questions of the applicant or staff or comments.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gower?
Brooke or John, so we got 36 comments and opposition. They range from traffic to horses to, you know, general environmental considerations. Can you address a few of those?
Certainly. And I think in my presentation, I think I addressed the horse situation. So those horses are currently diversionary, being fed right there at the the water tank. The, working with the Department of Agriculture, the horse advocates have an agreement, they will be moving those horses and diversionary feeding them up the hill. And so we feel that the fencing and that that maintenance of the fencing by the HOA in perpetuity helps to protect that fence line and our public. The horses are still going to be protected, but they are going to be moved, and that's for the safety of the public and also for the safety of the horses themselves. As far as when we look at the wildlife up there, the PUD, the Canyons PUD has a, they're going to be doing a big management plan and looking a little deeper on some things. Additionally, we'd assume that a lot of that information is going to come to here. There is one condition in there that does require that they reach out to Endow, which is the Nevada Department of Wildlife, and they are working with them to make sure they're addressing any concerns they may have on the site. Let's see, we, so we had some environmental, the trees are being maintained in that area, so we are looking to preserve those trees that are there. As far as some of those visual impacts, we have that, the condition of the rockery walls, which will minimize overall grading and impacts there. They also are going to be within a color, neutral color palette and landscape, so we are providing that additional buffering in that area. The condition, the buildings or structures will have to be done in a neutral color to help them blend in and be more, be more sensitive to view sheds and some of those things. As we look at traffic and some of those impacts, minimal with the 18 units, we found that it was minimal impact on the overall road structure. Mike Michelle is here, he can speak more if you want to go more into the traffic, but it was found to be, with the 14 units, found to be minimal, and the additional four did not really change any impacts that we've we've found in that. The utilities are close in place and Tullierium just will be brought up, and then the water tank and water security rights will come through the tank that is already approved through the Canyons PUD.
How does the project address wildland urban interface consideration?
Certainly. So there are a number of conditions within this that we are, and that's, and that's a big concern as we look at a fire in this area. So staff did sit down, we worked with Fire Marshal Trey Palmer on this specifically, and and looked at the roadway access, getting up to the roadway access, one of the big things we're seeing in this is that sprinklers of the building themselves to prevent that and get out. But there will be those defensible spaces, those will be the requirement of the HOA that they have to, certain materials that they can use in the structures, the landscape and how that will be not only implemented but maintained. Additional, additional signage is going to be required within this that we have in there that that says, look, this is a dangerous area, please be careful, you know, and some of those. So there's a number of, there's probably, there's one condition, but it has probably seven, eight parts that kind of go in detail of how we do that. And that is, that's through the state Fire Marshal and those, rules and conditions will be applied to this project.
Last question, and I know this is a tough one, and I think you've been asked it before by Commissioner Villanueva, but we have a finding that talks about housing affordability, and this came up in some of the comments from the community. Obviously, the price point for these houses, I would suspect, is not what we can, would consider affordable housing. How, from your perspective, can we make that finding regarding housing supply, including affordable housing for this particular project?
Certainly, and these are, these are all challenging, right? Everyone that we we come in and affordable housing is is something desperately needed within this community. We're not going to see it. Hill sides are hard to develop on, they're expensive to develop on, and it's probably not a product type that we would anticipate that that would. There is no condition, we are seeing conditions on other PUDs where we put it into the PUD that that we've gone for a charitable donation on that. That's one way that we've seen that done. We don't currently have it on this one. It is 18 homes, and we see it's a minimal impact, but there is that, there is that challenge of how do we do it? And that is one of the reasons we, efficient use of land is one way we do that, right? By providing, providing more homes or the ability to build more homes. Hopefully, what we, what we would like to see is people being, what we're seeing is people aren't being able to move up. And so people get stuck in a housing type which restricts other people moving up. And so, I mean, it is such a complex thing of how affordable housing and how to approach that. But in this particular case, we didn't address it head on like you, we've seen in some of the PUDs and other, other elements.
Okay. Thanks, Brooke. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, a couple of questions for you, if you would please. So one of the questions that actually I asked during the last presentation when we were looking at, obviously, where this site sits in the city of Reno, where the site sits in terms of potential, you know, additional annexations and everything else. And as a part of the findings, or excuse me, as a part of the discussion on both of these was talking about concurrency management, talking about, and I think you even mentioned it, where utilities are now to the point where this site is viable from a development standpoint. I guess my question is, is this site being developed as if it is at the end of the line? Or is this being set up for, you know, as potential stubs and the potential access to move beyond where we're at? I mean, if we, you know, we're, we're looking at questions about the wooie, we're looking at questions about the Virginia range, so we're, we're at the edge. But are we looking at this as, you know, from a utility development standpoint, it's the natural termination, utilities are terminated here, we're running a water line out there that feeds these units and nothing more? Or is the intention that this is, you know, kind of going to some of those public comments that we've had, is this basically just a stepping stone moving forward?
In my opinion, there's no physical ability to stub off of anything on this roadway network. I'm talking about from where that stub was, done in the, in the Palisades project, a stub with intention to serve this and an easement to go with it, there's no ability. Physical ability, and plus, we've capped it with putting a cul-de-sac at the end. There's no hint of any stub, right? Plus, it's all of the, as I discussed in the master plan amendment zone change discussion, it's the end of annexed land. There's a new day for annexation in Reno that requires a fiscal study to prove that you make fiscal sense. So those routine annexations no longer exist. When you're getting into land that's very inefficient and costly, it has to make sense fiscally for the city, which is a key decision now. As far as the fiscal limitations go, this is the end. I'm just.
No, and I appreciate that. I think that was, that was the question. And then I think the, my second question is to follow up on where Commissioner Gower was going. This is a housing type that, when we look at this overall area, is a little unusual. I mean, we're looking at a smaller footprint, a smaller development here, and I think there was some public comment that came in about the inapplicability of attached or town home units in a single family neighborhood. We've heard some good comment tonight about, you know, clustering the development and limiting the footprint, but how would you respond to the the commentary or the criticism of this as a housing type in what has been predominantly a single family neighborhood area?
Single family attached. It might be as expensive as any project in the area, and I think there's just a perception in public, I'm sure of it, that if you attach units, you're somehow affecting the quality of neighborhood or the quality of housing. That's what they think. I mean, people see attach and they think it's multifamily, and they draw some conclusions. So I think in terms of, I mean, this is all driven by environmental site design, right? As you know. And we have, I looked at master plan policy today under guiding principles, under foothill development, cluster development, diversity of housing product. These are, what we have, oh, innovative site design? With what's wrong with a single family attached next to single family detached 270 feet down the hill? And, and by the way, the market side of this, and I know you know this, Commissioner Johnson is Mr. Dolan, he's a numbers guy. He's looking at partnering with, you know, partnering with a builder on this. And, I mean, there is enormous demand for this product today, enormous demand, very efficient yards, there is basically no yard space, right? It's a patio or a balcony. You know, you come and go as you please, not a, not a lot of maintenance, and, and very respectable product that is envisioned for the property.
Okay. So, and I think you answered my question kind of at the beginning. This is still a single family residence.
It's still a single family residence. That's exactly right.
And, and actually, you answered my last question, which I was going to ask to Brooke, which was master plan findings in the foothill neighborhood. I had, had kind of looked at the number of them that were there, and, and I think you touched on that as a question from that standpoint. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. John, you can stay probably, maybe Brooke can talk about it. Obviously, saw the horse fence and everything we're doing there, and that's all well and good. That kiss me gate I like. Are we connecting or enhancing any trailway systems east of the property? I didn't know if there's any connections at all.
We have, there's, we're not disrupting any, and we do have that gate, right, that serves three purposes, so we do have that connectivity.
So the people there, they're able to connect to the trailways, obviously. And I didn't know if we were enhancing in any way, but I know that's not your property.
It's all, it's all off site, right? So you just do your part on connectivity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions I'm not sure who it is best for. Maybe we'll start with Brooke, just because I like your socks.
Thank you.
Very bright orange socks. So this site is eight acres.
Correct.
The buildable or the project is one and a half acres. Is that primarily because that's where you could build on, is about one and a half acres of it?
I think this is coming in many ways. So they have, as John Kupotic showed, the, the slope map that's showing that green area and that this development is really located within that green area, and the roadway sort of follows the contours up, that's part of it. The other is our hillside development standards, which are going to require a certain amount of open space, and they're going to limit the, the amount of units. And so they've really tried to use the site in a way that they're, they're meeting those hillside standards, and they're also trying to bring the units into the most developable portions of land and minimize the impact they have on those steeper grades.
Do you know the length of the road, the new roadway that needs to be built, how long that is approximately?
I, you mean the entire length?
Yeah, from where it ends currently to where it needs to be.
It's about, let's see, the onsite portion, like where we start the house, about 600 is about 1,500 feet total.
This road is about 1,500?
Yeah, the entire length to the end of the bulk.
Okay. And that is part of the 79 parking spaces? Is that, did I read that right?
Yes, right. So you have.
There's 18 units and 79 street parking.
There's, there's street parking that's going to be for public access to the, the adjacent land. That was the idea there. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think that's, I'll save it for discussion. Thank you.
If I can just clarify that, on that, on that parking, so what we have is four units per, or four parking spaces per unit. So we have two in a garage, two in a parking space. We have 19 will be provided along the roadway. So it's not 82 provided along the roadway for this.
Oh, okay. I thought I, I thought it was 79.
Each, each home is, is parked sufficiently to provide parking for there, and then we have additional street parking, which we'd anticipate with those, those kiss me gates or pedestrian access gates and some of those that we'd see the public being able to park there and use those trail systems or other open space in that area.
Okay, I did have another question with this road. Is there any impacts to the homes from headlights or anything like that of people using?
You know, from the orientation of this roadway, it's really that extension of Tullierium that was stubbed out to, to access this. And so we're not anticipating, everything's kind of moving up the hill, we don't see anything going in anyone's backyard. They're up at such a height by the time they reach up to the cul-de-sac where they turn around that they're above, they're well above the homes below them, so we don't anticipate any direct headlight impact on existing residents.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Dracula?
Just general discussion and to the point of, you know, real estate and the cost of the home and the desirability. In my professional opinion, I think this is a great product for that. I think a lot of people who are living in apartments in South Damani do want to move up or want to gain, you know, their own ownership, and this is a good step for it. It is definitely not going to be in the affordable segment, but it is a good step up, and sometimes even people even move down to a product like this and giving you more options there. If you like South Meadows and Damani, and you're in a 3-2 and it's 1,400 square feet, but you no longer need that much and want the, you know, the ability to have low maintenance, this is potentially a good product and let you stay in the neighborhood you want to stay in. So I professionally see that as a pretty solid project.
Great, thank you for that feedback. Any other discussion?
I have a, I have a comment.
Please.
I think, I think it's a great product. When I look at the map, just looking at it, and I think a comment was made, is this the last of it? Is this the stub? To me, when, again, I just look at it, I think the stub was 1,500 feet back on this road. It just seems completely like a development that shouldn't, shouldn't be there. If there's, it's just like an island kind of out there. And I'm looking at the findings for CUP two and three, and then also the tentative map finding H with the land development and cap, sorry, comparability, that's not the right word, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem to match to me. That's just my, those are my comments looking at it. I mean, there's, it's like, like I said, there's, if you look at just the road from where it starts and where it needs to go to get to these 18 homes, it seems out of characteristic when I look at it. I mean, I like the product, I just, I'm not sure that this location, I can understand it. Probably not the best way to explain it, but that's our map. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson? I'm actually going to respond to that because it's an interesting, it's an interesting observation. And as a part of discussion, I would say that my, my initial reaction when I looked at this was probably very similar to yours in terms of looking at the site plan and seeing where we were coming in and how far we were coming in in order to get to the developable area. And that was, so that was my initial comment, but that's when, and I appreciate Commissioner Gower's questioning and looking at this from a bigger picture, because to me, what we're seeing here is actually very similar to the discussion that we had about the Canyons project just to the north of here, which does have a mix of different housing types. It does have roadways that seem to kind of meander through the, the site area, and it, in my initial review, didn't seem really to fit, because I think I was picturing I was picturing the land use category, you know, pattern that we're seeing adjacent to that that's not up the hillside. So then I started to look, dig a little better, deeper into it in some of the questions and presentation that became appear in terms of that site is within the city, it was annexed, it was contemplated when the roadway network was put in with a stub to go out to that point. And the development on there is unusual as it looks with the rest of the sort of two-dimensional development. It is actually doing what I think some of our findings are asking for. So when I look at it for that, you know, the tentative map, and it's looking at basically finding H, which is the physical land characteristics for floodplain, slope, and soil, this is actually an appropriate way of dealing with that. And the idea of going with this attached, single-family clustered development is the proper way to develop in an area that, you know, in 2007 was contemplated as a logical expansion to the city. So my initial reaction, I think, was exactly where yours was, where it just seems a little bit out of place there. But the more I started to think about how this fit into it, and trying to understand it in the greater picture of moving beyond this point, and to John's comment about it being at the end of, you know, the end of the line was more a question of really, is this, is this the next step in providing access up the hill? And it's not. It's landlocked, it has a, you know, utility thing to the edge of it, it has unincorporated area with no access to the south. So it really is that final build-out, and it's being done in the way that makes, in my mind, maybe the most sense in terms of how to do that. So I definitely appreciate where you're coming from, because I was there too as I started to look into this. But the more we've had these questions presented and responded to, I've come around to seeing this as really an applicable way to build out on this site in that area and meetings a lot of those, you know, requests that we have for foothill neighborhoods in the master plan. So I definitely see where you're coming from, but, and so my explanation as to how I got there was that little five-minute diatribe. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over for the rest of the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't going to bring this up until request for future agenda items, but to the point of it being the end of development in this area. So this, this expansion was contemplated in the early 2000s, and it was the vision of building out this area. And I think we're seeing the completion of that vision that was, you know, and someone said, you know, the Dolans 20 years ago. I really think that the Planning Commission needs to be involved in conversations, if there are conversations, about the next 20 years, annexation of future lands in this area and elsewhere in the city, because I think what we're seeing here and elsewhere is the realization of that development, that growth boundary. Regional planning calls it the Truckee Meadows Services Area. It's that, you know, tier-two boundary. We look at these things in a certain way from a planning perspective, and for the Planning Commission to be sidelined in discussions about annexation is just, it's completely inappropriate. I mean, we're the body responsible for implementing the master plan, so how can we effectively implement the master plan if we're not involved in decisions about the future 20, 30, 40 years of the city? So, please let us be involved. To the city, please let the Planning Commission be involved in those conversations, because it's so relevant. I mean, and we have the information, we have the background, we have the master plan that we put together to inform those decisions. It's a, to John's point, it's a fiscal consideration, and it's a planning consideration. So, want to put that on the record. I know it's a little bit outside the scope of this agenda item, but I feel like it's something really important as we look at this kind of last puzzle piece in the puzzle that was started long ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr. Dragic?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner Dragic, ready to make a motion in the matter of case number LDC 22-00082 DP2. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend that Planning Commission approve the tentative map, conditional use permit, and minor deviation subject to conditions. I can make all the findings.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification. I think that staff wanted the minor deviation broken out as a separate motion.
Okay, would you like to withdraw your motion?
So, I guess I would put it back to the motion, or if he's willing to pull that out and make the same motion.
Yeah, no, I'm willing to pull that out, restate the motion.
Based on that, I would second that, and I can make all of the findings.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the tentative map and the conditional use permit, subject to conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries five to one. Commissioner Dragic, would you like to make another motion?
You got it. Matter of case number LDC 22-00082 DP2. Based on the compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend the Planning Commission approve the minor deviation subject to condition, and I can make all the findings.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will second that motion, and I do appreciate the explanation from staff on that. It seems like a pretty complicated little calculation that we went through. So I appreciated both the explanation and the description in the staff report to that end. So I second that and make the findings.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries five to one. Good luck with your projects. Thank you. Thanks, Brooke. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number five. Jason, I believe you're giving us a PC training?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Garcia-Laboo, Planning Manager for the Record. This is a relatively shorter presentation, about five to 10 minutes, seven slides. Our new tech person over there, if I could have her bring that up. Michelle. There you go.
Such a good photo.
Okay, before I started kind of a discussion on our staff report process and kind of how we process development projects when they come into our department, I really wanted to give a big thank you to our staff, who's now all gone. But, you know, I really couldn't do it without Nathan, Brooke, Grace, Joey, and Leah, our presenters, and they'll watch this tomorrow. So just giving them a shout out. So, Michelle, could you go to the next slide, please? So I really wanted to give kind of a brief presentation and overview of our application process. That involves kind of our project processing. It's, you'll see kind of a big picture of the process there. And then, as part of that, also kind of how we build staff report, and then really how do we get into the analysis and kind of develop those findings? And that's really been a topic of conversation at the commission on how do we get to our conclusions. So hopefully, just a couple of minutes on focusing on those items. Next slide, please, Michelle. So as far as our application process, typically with the pre-planning process through our planning department, we have two different paths. One comes before your commission, that's a 65-day process. So you can't read anything on that screen, but that's essentially all the different steps that we go through as part of that process. Our intake week is a three-day turnaround. We do it the second and fourth Mondays of the month. And our planning techs, shout out to Heather over there, put together our DRM is what we call it, but it's that development newsletter that comes out via email that identifies those projects. So, many of you are probably aware of this, but just for the members of the public that watch this, the processing and procedures of a lot of our application projects are really defined by both NRS, so it's our state law, as well as Title 18. And Title 18 actually has some very specific measures that we look at when we go through as part of processing. You'll notice this when we write in the staff report as well. So I want to make a point to say that we really work closely with the applicant. Our staff have a staff applicant meeting, and they go through and look at the design and the compatibility and how it kind of jives with our code, our master plan, and other policy documents. And as part of that, a lot of the times, when that product, that final design comes before the commission, we've had a lot of conversations. So we try to make a point of that when we've done that, just so that your commission's aware that we've anticipated some of the issues and taken that into account. But that's why I put project design and revisions on there. Next slide, please. Okay, I wanted to jump in really kind of into our documents that we utilize as part of this process. Most of you are familiar with these items, but to members of the public, we really, as our guiding document, it's a policy document, it's our master plan. And that lays out really how we look at growth, our policy for development within the city and the sphere of influence, which we call SOI. And just for reference, we just talked about this in the last item, but those are areas adjacent to the city limits that Reno still has jurisdiction over. So we typically will either get a building permit application or pre-planning application in those areas. But our master plan really lays out a physical map that shows locations of land uses. And just in looking at Reno's master plan, it's really an in-depth document that goes through, it kind of goes another step, and it shows compatible uses, it shows characteristics. I've used one with kind of the pretty photos there. But it also kind of identifies compatible zoning. So when we look at these different requests for zone changes or other things, when we look at these requests for compatibility with the master plan, we're looking at this section. So I want to kind of emphasize that because we, yes, we have policy, a policy section, and we cite those in the staff reports, but we also look at that compatibility sheet there, those characteristics, those zoning districts. So they all kind of work together. And in addition to that, we kind of have other plans. I know we reference the structure plan and area-specific policies along the lines of that as well. The easiest way to kind of break it up, I'm jumping into now Title 18 or the zoning, that's kind of a second document. So as I mentioned, the master plan is more of a policy document. The zoning is more of a technical document that we use when we're actually processing a building permit or a entitlement. And when I say that, I mean, we're looking at the setbacks, we're looking at the density, we're looking at the development standards, the design standards, things like that, that your commission is very familiar with. So that's hopefully a distinction between the two documents. They're very relevant to one another, and they work together, but they're different. So next slide, please. Okay, so now, the building a staff report. How do we kind of develop that staff report? What's the process? And thank you to Michelle, shout out to Michelle, because she's a big part of this process. But as far as that goes, when we get an application in, we typically will work closely with the applicant, but as you're aware, we go through a public process. This is set out, and we try to, when we get those comments in before a commission meeting, address a lot of those comments, or at least have answers to address some of those comments. Some of the examples tonight are regarding traffic, or fire, or whatever the issue is. So typically, there's two ways that we really receive comments. One is through our consultation, and that's when we send out that development newsletter at the beginning of the process. And through that process, we really want feedback. So a good example of that was RTC tonight. Some other agencies, the Health Department, or the Fire Department, or Police Department, will provide us feedback on a project so that we can design conditions of approvals to mitigate some of those impacts. So it's really important as part of that process, we rely upon the experts to help us build and cover those areas that a project might have issues about. So in addition to that, we really take a look at our table in Title 18. Reference is 18 dot point 03 point 206, and that's our land use table. And it goes through and it actually identifies per zone what types of uses you can do. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but members of the public, you can actually take a look at that, and you can see all the different uses that are allowed per the zone, as well as kind of what planning permit is required. So it could be what we call by right, which is just allowed directly to building permit. It could be requiring some kind of use permit or other entitlement. So, and through that process, we really, again, utilize Title 18 for those technical standards, and that's what we call development standards. That's our design standards, our improvement standards, and other items which can be wrapped into both entitlements, like a conditional use permit, as well as at the building permit level. So a lot of items that may not necessarily come before the Planning Commission, we still have standards regarding sidewalks, sewer connection, and other things like that. So, next slide, please. So as far as our analysis, I know this has really come up before a discussion with the commission, but when we look at making a conformance determination, we look at a number of different areas. One is that initial compatibility with the zoning, and also the compatibility with the master plan. And as far as kind of, again, two different things, but they kind of work together. The zoning compatibility, we look at that use table and see if a project will jive with that zoning. As far as on the master plan end, we kind of take a different type of approach. That's more policy-driven. You'll see those policy references, as well as we'll look at that characteristics table, and whether or not the zoning compatibility fits into that as well. From that, we'll make a conformity determination, and the language here is substantial conformance. Usually, staff will look into a project to see if the project overall meets the goals and the intent of the master plan, usually citing or referencing specific policies to kind of back that up. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that everything in the master plan is going to conform. You know, a project might not meet every single thing, but if it meets the main point of it, or a majority of it, or it's really consistent with the intent of that, that's where you see kind of that, the staff finding for that. That works in conjunction really with the, I have listed on here, use description and land use category guidance, and that's on that slide that I just had previously that has the pictures on it, and it goes through, and it actually identifies what type of uses are allowed in certain types of land use areas. So, next slide, please. So you're probably familiar with this. I stole this from one of Grace's presentations, but we like to give examples to show the commission where we have different uses and how they work with different zonings, and then how that impacts those development standards. So you'll see this in a lot of our staff reports or our PowerPoint presentations. We try to really emphasize and be consistent to lay out all the information on the table for your commission to make decisions. So this is kind of the end of my presentation, but I really wanted to take a minute to say that staff is really here to support giving the information to your commission to the best of our ability. So we help, we hope to, we hope to help get you to where you need to be and give you the information. So if there's anything, any items on future agendas, or we can get speakers, like have been mentioned previously, we're looking at having the um, like, um, have been mentioned previously, um, we're looking at having the, uh, the school district potentially have somebody come out. Or occasionally we'll have, uh, regional or RTC or somebody come to the commission. Um, any of those things that would help with the decision-making, let us know. Uh, we're here to help and, um, I hope that this brief overview has really kind of given you a snapshot into our processes. Um, obviously I didn't go through every technical detail, but this is the condensed version at nine o'clock after a full meeting, so let me know if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, answer any requests, so. Uh, I really appreciate this. I have a quick question for you and it's just kind of for my knowledge. Uh, we obviously see everything that staff has made or making recommendations for us to, uh, approve and move along. How many applications or how many things come in do not get to this point? Uh, that's a good question. Um, it really, it really depends on, um, I'm going to say the market really drives the applications. Um, we range from anywhere from two to 11 applications at intake, so it's very hit or miss. You'll notice this by the agendas as well. Um, sometimes we'll have seven items, um, in a cup, in September, you may have two on some of the agendas, just kind of what comes in. That being said, there's a lot of different, um, conditions that we need to address. Um, sometimes we originally think a project requires an entitlement and it doesn't. So we, we had one recent case where that's, they redesigned the project so they were able to withdraw that application. Other times there's serious concerns and it just never comes to the table, it doesn't make it. Uh, they end up having to withdraw or it's abandoned. Um, we do have certain processing timelines and, and do that out. I would say to answer your question directly, though, a majority of those projects do come forward, so we, we work closely, um, and, and, you know, I would say it's more on the handful that really have some kind of design issue or other thing that can't be mitigated. Usually there's some kind of compromise to make sure that it works with the code, so. Any other questions or comments?
Sure. Thank, Jason, thank you for that presentation. I appreciate that. I think the one, one comment that I would have, um, and I think staff is doing it, but what I would like maybe as a request is you're going through the master plan policies. Um, one thing that I, I find, um, that maybe we, I haven't seen quite as much is that there's a lot of master plan policies that are general in nature and there are a lot of master plan policies that are specific to either the, you know, the quadrant of the mixed-use area or the type of neighborhood that we're at. Um, and to me, it would be, I, I think in terms of having a project that comes forward, um, and maybe I'll just use the, the, the last one today, that comes forward that may be a little outside of what we're used to seeing. Um, I think there was a lot of discussion about the Foothill Neighborhood's specific policies to which that, that conformed to. And I think that, at least in the way staff's looking at it, I would appreciate maybe the focus, as much focus as possible on the, the specific aspects of how the project is supporting maybe the master plan policies for that particular area. Um, because having 10 or 12 general ones that are almost, you know, code compliance requirements, to me, that's a, you know, that's sort of a given. But I would like to, you know, if it's coming to us for discretionary review, it's probably because there are some questions about it, whether it's compatible, traffic issues, you know, all those are the things. So I think, um, really, you know, drilling down into not just the overreaching policies, because I think we can all agree, most of the projects we see are going to fit into some category or substantially do that. But, you know, if we can be specific as to, hey, here's a, here's a project and staff does a great job of saying, here's the major things, that the major issues that we were looking at, if at the same time we can say, here's the, the specific, area-specific master plan policies that this is supportive of, to, to maybe work through that. So maybe less of the, you know, general ideas and more, you know, specific as to what exactly we're doing. That, that's sort of the, the one thing that I'm trying to get at when I'm, you know, asking the questions tonight, it's like, how is this specific project supporting these specific policies for this specific type of use? So that would be, a, and I do think putting some of that impetus on the applicants would be good, too. I've seen, I, I go back into some, you know, I appreciate staff passing out, you know, when we get the link, there's the links to all of documentation for each one of those projects. So I'll go in there and often those applications list their, you know, what they think are the policies that it supports. And so I think, you know, staff often brings those forward, but maybe putting that, you know, question back to a lot of the development, the, the developers and the, the applicants that are coming in to say, how is this, you know, not just hitting all the GP1 topics, but how is it hitting the, you know, the Foothill Neighborhood topics? So, but again, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the work you do, that's just my one comment in terms of, of how we're handling that.
What is the deadline for you guys to get presentations from the applicants?
The deadline is noon the day before the meeting.
Okay.
I, I did not meet that deadline for the record. So I gave her my presentation this morning.
You get an exception.
Yeah, but she was nice to me.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, have you seen a slowdown in applications recently?
This last intake, we only had, uh, two applications. Um, so we'll see what this next intake next week is, so.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we'll close agenda item number s- five and move on to number six, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll take this one. After this, I'm going to let somebody else take these, because as of the meeting last week, I am no longer the chair of the, uh, regional planning that has been turned over to the county representative, so, uh, that changes every July. Uh, two items on the agenda last week. One was a, a rezoning of the Western Village out in Sparks and the other was a master plan, uh, designation of, uh, industrial land use. I think we might remember that project in Mogul on the south side of the freeway, uh, that got pulled out of the sphere of influence, back to the county. It was a whole messy situation, but ultimately the county put in a zoning request to change it to industrial, which was approved, so now any development on that site is subject to the requirements for the county in that area. So, uh, those were the two items. The next meeting would be the, uh, end of, last, uh, Thursday in August.
Great, thank you. Jason, staff announcements?
Okay, real quick. Um, at the July 27th City Council meeting, the Canyon's Edge Project, uh, went ahead and it was approved. The second reading of that will be August 10th. I think that's why you saw kind of a mixture with the comments with tonight's DP2 items, because they're in that same relative area. Um, and then my last comment before we close up, um, there are seven items on the next agenda, pretty full. Um, one of those will be, uh, Title 18 amendments, um, for addressing some areas with packaged alcohol, uh, cannabis, and then live entertainment. So that was just noticed today, so it's on the agenda. And that's everything from staff.
Great, thank you. Uh, agenda, agenda item number eight, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Jason, if we could, um, I mean, you and I can brainstorm maybe outside of the meeting, but what I would like to have is, um, a presentation about annexation and how the city goes about it would be great, but, um, Mr. Chairman, if you would entertain us having a, a forum for a discussion on this as well and more of like a workshop format that's potentially facilitated by staff, um, I, I think that would be, that would be really worthwhile.
Definitely. A quick one for me, uh, I don't know. Well, first, thank you so much for, uh, letting me be the chair, I really appreciate it. I promise to be efficient and, uh, and do things as well as I can. Um, one of the things that I was, was recently asking folks is if they have ideas as to how to improve the process. I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers, I'm just curious on that, but one thing that came up, I don't necessarily know if we can do as a commission, but someone suggested a, uh, I guess like a higher fee to expedite applications and that has to come from the city council, obviously, but, uh, that might be an interesting idea for us if there's any way that we could recommend that or if there can be a discussion about that, especially if that fee could go towards affordable housing or go towards something that would be helpful. Uh, it might be a good way to incentivize applications to get here faster and then also generate some money to go towards affordable housing.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair, uh, I'll piggyback that, I'm just trying to understand better or, Jason, if you can help us out on, um, how we expedite affordable housing projects coming through here, whether they front of the line, get here faster. I know that's a very complicated question, but kind of the reverse of that. I'd love nothing more than to see those, you know, have a better chance of getting here quicker, moving faster. It does affect the cost of the project, uh, immensely over time, so I will just piggyback there.
Great idea. Great, we'll, uh, close agenda item number eight. Uh, number nine, is there any request to speak for us, Michelle?
There's no public comment for this item.
Great. Anyone in the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Uh, number 10 adjournment, is there a motion?
It's moved.
I heard a second as well, and I heard all the votes.
Aye.
Aye.